All right, how you doing?
My advice is always, I raise the whole issue.
I know. That's going on, man. You doing all right? Yeah.
That's the only thing we have to do. We literally advertise.
It's crazy now to this point, yeah. Jump out, I mean, it doesn't cost that much. And you don't pay them until they find you something. And I'm sure other cities have done that. Probably could get some recommendations.
Well, on the, the ones that just go to plenty of. Yeah, we've already started one. Amanda and I are starting one for other. We cannot change just one section of the U D C. Not have an effect. Like, right now, we're changing the drainage. I'm not going to change any of the construction in twelve point two. That's fine.
Hammer City Council Public Hearing Agenda. April, ah, I'm sorry, April. August, August the twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, five thirty P M. Roll call, please.
You said August. You looking for August, too?
March.
March.
I shot all the way up there, I'm sorry.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
Public hearing item number one.
An ordinance to establish procedures related to retired service animals, Lacy.
As we discussed at the last meeting, this is an ordinance that has come under recommendation by our city attorney due to some state law changes concerning the donation of a canine at the end of his service term. So with us tonight is actually probably our longest-serving canine handler from back in the day.
Me?
Yes. Lieutenant Pavona is here. Assistant Chief Monaster is also here to answer questions about that. But we thought Lieutenant Pavona would be great since he's had a service animal for a long time and was actually part of our canine squad way back in the day. And then we had an interim where we didn't have it, and now he's involved with it again. So. Do you want to come speak?
Me either. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, at the council. The reason I'm here is this ordinance. Um, couple of things I would urge the council, I don't know if we passed this point, but a couple of things I would remove and a couple of things I would add. One thing I would add would just go ahead and put what the cost is going to be. When I'm, my dog retired, my first dog that was here and handled retired, the city sold him to me for a dollar, and I had to sign a waiver of liability because, and that was it. And I say the dollar because I don't think there's a Kelley Blue Book value on animals out there. And the reason he's retiring is because he cannot work. He's either cannot work because he's injured or cannot work because of some other medical reason, or he's not working because of old age. So I would say establish that in the ordinance, that it's a dollar. And the first part you have in there is pretty good. It goes to the handler, handler first. The handler's been with him for pretty much his whole career, most of the time. I know, I, I know I, I now have a dual handler dog. The dog I currently own or use for the city was a previous handler's dog. But first, first right of refusal is great, goes to the handler. I would say the second right of refusal, if the handler doesn't want him, is that you offer it to any existing handlers or handlers that worked for the city in the past. And the reason for this, and take out the public, the public, uh, the public being able to get a hold of it, because what, what happens is, we, we buy these dogs as apprehension dogs. And when I say apprehension, we buy these dogs to bite people. We don't buy these dogs because we're gonna sit him by the fireplace and dress him up in, uh, Christmas ornaments for Christmas. We buy him to essentially attack people on command. So therefore, when you get into trying to bid him to the public, I don't think it's the safest and most liability-free aspect out there. Just for instance, we use every household commands for the dog to attack somebody. His, my dog's apprehension command is yes. So he's sitting around a public, somebody in the public gets the dog, and the dad's, little Timmy asks for a cookie, and the dad says yes, and then the dog attacks the, you know? And as the dog gets older, and without the training and knowledge of how to handle the dog, they will regress into bad behaviors, such as we train for our dog to apprehend somebody and release on command. If you leave that lack of training, that dog may latch on to somebody and not release until he's good and ready, which will cause lots of damage. So I'd take out number two on there, and I would put in, add to number one, that if the current handler does not want him, that any previous or current handlers at the time have the second right of refusal. Therefore, the dog's going to somebody who's trained, the dog's not going out just to the public. Um, once again, in all my years, I have been doing this since oh-two and on, this is probably about my fifteenth year canine handling, and I'm not getting out now. We're a member of USPCA Canine Association. We talk to dog handlers throughout the country. I don't think there's anybody that's ever gotten rid of their dog once it retired, because A, it becomes a part of your family. So the, the first part, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, the current handler's gonna, gonna take him, especially if it's a dollar. Then the other point one percent, any other handler would probably take him if the current handler doesn't. So that's all I urge about that. Like I said, I've never seen a handler that didn't want their dog. It becomes part of your family, per se. You with it eight, nine, ten years sometimes. So, all right, that's all.
Lieutenant Pavona, could we also clarify that the dogs are apprehending criminals? And could we also clarify that they have other duties as well, like to search for narcotics and other weapons and things like that?
Yeah, but I would, that's the date, that, the, searching for narcotics is not the We just want to emphasize the value of the canines. But once again, once he can't work no more, he can't work no more. You're not going to get another agency once he can't pass his qualifications or work to pay him, if that's, if that's what you're trying to do, to outsource him to another agency at eight, nine years old. Even at that time, my dog didn't last a full year after he retired, I had to put him down. They're almost on the brink of death anyway. They don't, their lifespan don't really go much past ten years old. So NCOA and Roco are, all, all three of our dogs are coming up on nine years old as we speak. So, thank you.
Thank you for the insight. I expressed some concern at the last meeting where, and I didn't go as far as you did with it, but in the event the handler, let's say, they are physically unable to say, I want the dog, perhaps they're, you know, no longer with us, that we would have to go to number two, which is to the highest bidder. And I have a problem with that because, like, well, I didn't think about the danger, I was thinking more about the welfare of the dog. They need to be some, with someone who wants them and cares for them, not just who's willing to pay whatever is possible to get them. So perhaps, Andre, we could put in there any handlers with the city, any former handlers with the city, maybe go so far as to say that the person has to have the requirement of that association or training that you guys have, so that we know that they are taking care of that dog in the manner in which they have to.
I think those are excellent points that he raised. And, and I think we can create a tier, the most immediate handler, other previous handlers, anybody associated with the animal in the department. And then if there's a default, and for some reason which is not expected, then you default back to a licensed veterinarian, in which case, you know, you're probably end-of-life kind of situation. Then you would consult with them. But I agree, I think you remove number two.
Can we remove number two?
Yes.
Considering that it's an asset of the city and it has to be bid to, to sell.
Well, remember, now, what I, what I don't agree with is to set a price automatically.
Right.
I think we, we do have an attorney general's opinion, which we can use for support, which demonstrates that actually an animal at that age, at that condition, and probably needs care, is actually a negative asset of the city. So I think, I think it'll be fairly easy to paper that up, and the end result would likely be a dollar or something like that as, as a payment. But, but I, look, I agree with this comment, that I didn't really consider a public in putting an animal out who's been trained for the public. So my thought would be, upon retirement, the immediate handler, then you go down the list of previous handlers, then anybody else who's associated with the animal in the department. If that doesn't result, then it would default to number three, and you consult with a licensed veterinarian for what's an appropriate way to handle the dog. But you, so you would delete two, and then create a tier system under number one, starting with the most immediate handler. And I can help you with that at the time.
Do, we want to do, do this tonight? We, you don't think you need to come back and review it? I think we can amend this correctly, yeah.
Being able to make those revisions pretty cleanly.
Could you come back up here, sir, please? It's just like a father and a mother. How you doing first? I apologize.
That's okay, I'm doing well, sir.
Good. It's just like a father and a mother. If this a bad mother, if this a bad father, why would you sit here and get that child back to that mother or father? And I'm asking this a question. I heard everything you said. What if it's a bad handler, and we turn around and give him this dog, when this dog didn't do what he was expecting that dog to do? And what I'm saying is, and I done heard, you know, back in the days, that if a dog didn't do nothing that the handler asked him to do, slap, hit, kick, you know all these things, you know? I'm not saying you one of them, but this is what I done heard and took place in Tangipoh Parish.
Hasn't taken place in Hammond. Not our dogs. No, no, I didn't say that. I said Tangipoh Parish. Well, we're not giving a dog to Tangipoh Parish, are we? No, no, I say, no, I know what you're saying, but what I'm saying is, you know, and I know,
we done heard a bad policing with the dog, not doing what the police expect the dog to do. I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, now you're just generalizing, but that hasn't happened with any of our dogs.
Okay.
And the handler that we have is, all our handlers are excellent, all our dogs certify every year, hadn't had any problems. Not saying there is a problem with any of our dogs, I'm just saying, with lack of training and going to somebody who doesn't know how to keep training him throughout the rest of his career, he could regress. So therefore, if you give him to somebody in the public who doesn't know what to do with him, then he could regress to become a bad dog, uh, per, per se.
Yeah.
If you give him back to the handler who's been with him all his career and knows how to train him and continue training him, even though he's debilitated, he won't regress to that state.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll stand up here in case any other question.
Anyone else from the public on this matter?
Sal Nicolosi, thirty-six oh-seven, Highway one ninety, Hammond, Louisiana. Uh, I'm concerned, like she's saying with the dog, you know, uh, once the dog is retired, you know, what is the city's responsibility for that dog? You know, what, what does the city council feel they should do with that animal once it's past its service time? I think a lot of people, that the owners, the ones that was the policeman on it, if they couldn't accept that dog or keep the dog themselves, I think it's, it'd be a burden to the city to have someone, you know, adopt that dog or take it, and, you know, other than, uh, once they get ten, eleven years old, that's pretty well the lifespan of that dog anyway, from what I'm aware of. So I don't know what y'all have in mind, but I think it should be in mind of, of what that animal, whether it's gonna be utilized, you know, utilized or whatever, or, or brought to a farm or somewhere, or whatever, I don't know, you know? So, you know, anybody got any comments on this? I'd like to hear it.
Well, that's what the point of the ordinance is, where it kind of creates a hierarchy of how the dog can be placed with someone who can care for it, so it's no longer the city's responsibility to pay for veterinary care and feed and all that. So it would go to a handler, and what we're proposing is the current handler, right? When it's retired, like, it no longer can work. It retires, it can go to the handler, if the handler can't take it, a former handler or anyone associated with the dog. And then if, then none of those people can take it and become the owner, because the city owned it, and we're trying to give ownership to somebody else, then we would consult with a licensed veterinarian to determine the value of the dog and whether it should be sold or donated to someone in the appropriate home in which it should go. Does that make sense? So that it's for the care of the dog.
Well, I don't really think it's in the best interest of the dog, what, what you're stating. I think that the, from what I'm aware of, uh, you know, normally a dog is, is the master. With that dog, the master of that dog, but if you place him with someone else, that don't mean that dog's gonna respond.
But that's why it's a hierarchy. The trainer, hopefully, is the one who's able to take it. They're the first one.
And if he doesn't.
If he doesn't, then it's another trainer, a person who knows how to handle the dog. And then if he doesn't, someone else who's associated with the dog. Nobody wants it to go down to the second, third, or fourth level, but we're trying to plan for if it has to go to the second level, because the first level can't take it. You can't force the trainer to take it.
It sounds to me like you're trying to kick it down, or, you know, kick the can down the street.
Well, what would the alternative be?
Well, I think, you know, once the dog is the trainer, as, as Mr. Pavona was saying, you know, once he's out of his, his service, then what else could you do with him? He's gonna be, he's gonna be a liability to the city of Hammond. If that dog attacked somebody, even if the, if it's handed off to another, to another owner, then they gonna be liable for whatever's happening with that dog. So.
But what would be the alternative to that?
If I was a, a councilman, I might would know what would be the alternative, you know? But I'm not. So what I'm saying is that basically, you may have to have the dog, you, you know?
Set aside. I mean, Mr. uh, Mr. Pavon, you want to come up here, sir?
Well, let me, let. I think what you're saying is what the council has already proposed, sir. Okay. I think, for instance, so if my dog retired tomorrow.
Okay.
I would get the first choice to have him.
Okay.
And then they're saying if I don't have the first choice to have him, then somebody that works with me, who has been around the dog, who is another handler like me, will have the chance to have him.
All right.
And then at third, maybe my wife, or maybe his wife that has been around him. And then the third part would be the veterinarian would say, hey, let's do this with the dog. And that, they're not necessarily saying it's gonna go to somebody in the public, it's gonna go to somebody that has qualifications to be able to handle the dog.
Okay.
Is it common for the handler not to want the dog? Is it very common for it?
It's not common at all.
Okay.
That's why I said, you, your first, your first line is gonna be ninety-nine point nine percent effective. It's gonna be like that point one percent.
Yeah, somebody might get sick, the handler may get sick and he can't do it, or whatever.
The ma, handler may have been injured during an accident with the dog.
Pass away or whatever, yeah.
Something like that. Now, and then in that instance, though, that dog has been around that family, the wife may be able, the wife of the handler may.
May want it, yeah.
There's lots of interaction with it. My wife, my kids play with my dog all the time. He's, he's in essence a pet at home, but he still knows work and he still listens and has to, has to abide by rules. So that's what they're saying. Now, they're, they're trying to avoid going to the public and just any random person.
Well, thank you for answering those questions.
Okay.
Public hearing number two.
An ordinance to revise the requirements for permits to ambulance services and other provisions relative thereto, Lacy Landrum and Mr. Dewayne Mesh.
I'll just introduce, uh, Mr. Mesh from Acadian. As we discussed in the last meeting, this is just to update our ordinance regarding ambulance services, which was last updated in the nineties. Tangipoh Parish as a whole has already updated their ordinance, and so what we are proposing aligns with that same, those same changes. This would reflect the current standards in both the equipment, the certification of E M Ts, the other things that happen in ambulance services. And Mr. Mesh is here to provide those details.
Thank you, counsel. I just really wanted to come in case there were any questions whatsoever about your present ordinance. As she said, um, the Tangipoh Parish ordinance and the City of Hammond's ordinance mirror one another, and, um, they had not been updated since nineteen ninety. And, uh, so in discovering that and a lot of the needs and, um, regulations by the ordinance were outdated and weren't up to date, um, Tangipoh Parish updated theirs, and then I reached out to Ms. Lacy to ask that the city do the same, to bring both ordinances to mirror one another. And, um, that, that's what I was here for tonight, and then answer those questions. And then I had a little brief presentation, if you guys would allow, a minute or two. So in my presentation, I wanted to say that, number one, we appreciate the support that Tangipoh Parish and the City of Hammond have given us over the last forty years. It's been a great partnership with you guys. We continue to provide the services and stay on the cutting edge and try to keep up with all the most current statutes, regulations, and just in the industry, try to be a leader and give you guys service that you're proud of here in the City of Hammond. And you have our word that we will continue to do that. And, um, you know, just wanted to let you know that right now, just like many companies, we're hiring, we have some sponsorships out there, I left some literature by each of you's desk. It's a great time, if you know people who may have interest in E M S, um, we have sponsorships out there. Hammond Area Technical College here, uh, has that, we're doing sponsorships with them, we're partnering with them. We have a National E M S Academy, which is a lot of the information you have there. It has my card on each one. If you have a family, friend, constituent, and you know of them wanting to, either them or their children or somebody in their family have interest in that, it's a great time for it with these sponsorships. They are monies that we're putting into the kitty, if you will, to assist with that training and cut a lot of the expenses that they have through those sponsorships. We've got a class coming up in April, we've got another in June, uh, one in July, and one in, uh, September. And, uh, we having the E M R classes, which is also on their emergency medical responder classes, those we're holding monthly. And a lot of those folks, it's giving them opportunity to either switch careers or maybe coming out of high school, that, uh, the high school graduate is not sure where they want to go, or they may have gone to college for a semester or two, and it's just not for them. We're open for that, and we're looking for good people. So just wanted to pass that information on to you, and also thank you very much for everything.
Thank you. I have a question for you. How old do they have to be to start in this program? What's the age?
Eighteen. Need to have a high school diploma or G E D. Uh, there are some requirements as far as their capabilities of lifting. We have a lot of lifting in our job career. Have to have a good driving record. And, you know, if they want to, uh, they can reach out on, either directly to me, my card's on there, I highlighted my cell number, it's good day, night, weekend, weekday, we're looking for good people. And if you know good people, you tell them to call me, or you can refer to the flyer I have, it has some websites and other places they can go to get that information. But if you have one, Mr. Wells, in, in mind, or, doesn't have to be one, can be many, uh, we have a lot of positions, you want to refer them directly to me, I'll walk them through the system.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hammer City Council Regular Session Agenda, March twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, five fifty-three P M. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
At this time, we'll have our prayer by Bobby Mitchell. Amen. Now, for our pledge of allegiance, all veterans and active military, please render the proper salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to get an approval on our minutes from March the fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting, please.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Now we're down to final adoption of ordinance. Number one.
All right, final adoption of an ordinance to establish procedures related to retired service animals.
I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to amend, uh, as it's written. Do you want to do it, or I can?
Well, let me, let me offer a suggestion.
Sure.
So I think based on the good comments and discussion, I would recommend that number one, item number one, be revised so that upon the retirement of a service animal, the, the order of preference is to the most immediate handler, and then in successive order of the other handlers. And then thirdly, to anyone who may have been associated with the animal or worked with the animal. And then secondly, I think I'll just eliminate paragraph two. So you just don't have an, just a general offer to the public. And then you just, the next order would be just number three. So paragraph number three will become number.
Number two. That is my men, those are my amendments to it.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Final adoption of ordinance number two.
Final adoption of an ordinance to revise the requirements for permits to ambulance services and other provisions relative thereto, Lacy Landrum.
Any questions, anything from anyone? All right, can I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Introduction of, uh, ordinance is set for public hearing. Introduction number one.
Introduction of an ordinance to make changes to the U D C regarding multifamily developments. Councilman Diveterio.
Yeah, this was, um, some changes I brought up, uh, for the U D C. We have a moratorium on apartments right now, um, throughout Hammond. So, uh, during the time, we've had it, um, last, last year, tried to send an email out to try to get the ball rolling on looking at some U D C, uh, changes that might help the developments out to make it a little better for Hammond, uh, infrastructure, uh, drainage, crime, et cetera. drainage, crime, et cetera, and didn't really get anywhere. So I wanted to start off and try to get the ball rolling, introducing some of these changes where there's a starting point to discuss, and possibly get it to the planning and zoning to review, and may make some recommendations and get some public hearing input from the public as well, discuss with developers and other builders and everything else about it. And, you know, we've, it's kind of in my industry, and we've kind of discussed some things, and these are some of the, some of the issues. And there's, there's a bunch of little points on there that have changed their outline that were attached, that were recommended, some, some modifications that would improve the, the structures of 50-plus unit complexes in the City of Hammond.
Anyone have any questions? Anyone from the council have any questions?
Councilman, did you get with planning and zoning on any of these possible recommendations?
Um, I've talked to some members before about it, and also this is why I'm introducing it now. It's where we'll forward it to them, just like we've done in the past on other changes we've made to improve our building codes and building policies. And so it'll go to them, and then they'll discuss it, and they'll maybe make some recommendations. Maybe add, they may add some more changes than I didn't have on there, or they may say everything's great, or say everything's nothing. They think everything's perfect and fine. And then it'll come back to us, and we'll discuss and vote on it at that time.
After planning and zoning, would it go to, would it go to anyone in the city? City administration?
It would go to the planning and zoning department, which the city is involved with that administration and everything else, just like every other topic that's brought up to them.
I think, Ms. Karen, could you come up and kind of explain what's going on, please? Yeah, you.
Well, that, this one right here was, was kind of a little different to multifamily, which the moratorium I had out there that I put out there to work on improvements, you know, some of the highlighted is traffic studies for 15-plus apartment complex, drainage improvement for different study on the flood plains, on, you know, requirements, you know, cameras at some of these developments 50 and above, the density issues, all those things that affect Hammond's residents, that people live here. You have to at some point in time raise your bar of your building codes and regulation policy as the city grows. So when you drive around, you see other cities do this as well, and you should, you try to go ahead and improve your, your building codes, your, your policies to, to make it a better place and infrastructure improved throughout. And so that's why we have a moratorium out here right now. That was my goal, to look at things and see if we have any improvements needed to be made before we just stamp off and approve a bunch of large multifamily complexes being built all over throughout the city. So that was my concern, was the vision of the City of Hammond, to improve and, and look better and continue growing in the right direction. And these are my recommendations that I've studied, that I've thought would be a good topics that we need to look at at the UDC to make some changes to, to have a better Hammond and better development. And so without having anything and somebody initiating this, it'll, it will not get done, and therefore that's why we have it here. And Steve, you may think everything is fine and have no issues with it, and, you know, and that's fine. That's your opinion. So.
I think by Ms. Karen them being on the, on the board from the beginning, right?
Well, I think this is a little, this is-
Yeah, yeah, it is. It's different.
Separate, but it's related.
Yes.
To the housing study that was completed.
Yes.
So that, that's, another resolution is going to deal with that, Sam, here, about continuing the work that the consultant did.
It's number seven.
And there we go from here. So of course, in, in the study, we didn't deal with anything subservice that the consultant deals in subservice issue. And they, they took a broader view and focused then on areas that needed reutilization, where there was opportunity for, for new housing, affordable housing. We had a focus also on single-family homeownership, but affordable. So it's related, but this one really focuses more on how many units should be-
And, and other, and other, yeah, and other studies for, for larger 50 and above. So the, these, these changes come from some of my district, District Four members that have addressed some concerns throughout the city on, on developments. And so therefore, that's why I'm here today presenting this and introducing it to go to the planning and zoning. And so it's, it's on the table for them to, you know, discuss, kick it around. That's why we have a board over there. And if they think that some things need to be modified or, or added, then they can, they can voice their opinion on that as well, too. And it'll be a public discussion and, and go from there. And hopefully we'll, we'll come to, come to some improvements in the UDC and, and our codes and, and building for larger developments that, that will continue to make Hammond better and not hurt Hammond. So.
I have a question, and I'm glad, I think this is a good idea. The moratorium, which I've consistently voted against renewing, is, you know, that's four or more units or something like that. And so we're going all the way from four to 50. Is the intention that if this were to pass, that we don't need the moratorium anymore?
No, that, that's, that's not what that is. That's, that's, they're changing, they're changing all apartment densities, but it's also concentrated on 50-plus. The moratorium is to stop multifamily for more, so five units while we do improvements in it. So it's not to say, oh, we don't need a moratorium, anything under 50 can go. It's usually put a moratorium on the, the subject title, topic of you're trying to improve. So you are improving it, or looking at it, or studying it, and, and discussing it, and having a pause to where you, you do your homework, and then you present it, no changes, then you lift a moratorium. Or if you make changes, then you lift a moratorium. And here it's concentrated on 50 and more, and some of the major changes, but there are also changes all across the board under these parking spaces. Complaints about parking on some of the areas where, you know, it's, it's, if you've got a three-bedroom, two-bath property, you have three, you may have guests, and you have two per unit, and they're all congested, parked on the road and streets and everything. So we have to look at all of that. That's, no matter if you have two units, 10 units, 20 units, 30 units. So it's a variety of recommended amendments of all units.
So we're just starting with 50 and above, but-
Yeah.
Hold on, hold on. And so if 50, if this were to pass, after planning and zoning looks at it, and we determine it's appropriate, so there's still a moratorium on those 50 units. So we have in place that that can happen, but we can't happen because of the moratorium. And then we go down to lesser units and figure out what it is we need to change for those while the moratorium's in place. I'm just-
Yeah, yeah, you have a moratorium in place right now for all apartments over four units. Right now, we're looking at this, and this is a proposal. If there's changes made or not changes made, as soon as, I mean, you can, you know, you've got six months on a moratorium, so when it expires, you can vote no to not extend it, like you have, or you can vote to extend it. If we're finished with studying and making changes, and the planning and zoning is finished, looking at it, they may recommend that it should go down to 40. They may recommend it should go down to 20. They may recommend different sets for 20 and under, 30 and under. They may have all kinds of remedies. There may be somebody from the public that comes up and recommends a point that we hadn't discussed, and section breaks it off. Impact fees, they may recommend 500, 300, 1,000, or 2,000. These are starting point topics to get on the table, to look at, to review, that are all in the ballpark of issues and, and address concerns of the citizens of Hammond that have came to me in my district. So therefore, it's not going to fix itself. It's not going to prove itself. You got to sometimes take the initiative to get it fixed and work on it, and try to see if there's any improvements that needed to be made in that. So that's where we're at right now. So the moratoriums and moratorium apartments for until it expires. And if you choose to not extend it, that's your choice. Whenever, you know, expires, if we're finished or not finished with it. So.
Okay. What I'm asking, though, and the only reason I keep voting no against extending the moratorium is there's not a directed idea of what is changing, where it's going. And so now, this is the first change, substantive change, which is great. I'm, I'm happy that the conversation is starting. And so I'm trying to figure out if, if we're getting all of the problems with the, that the moratorium is stopping, because we've not really identified what needs to change, and this is why we're having a moratorium. So I was wondering if this is what you think needs to change to make the moratorium go away. But you're saying it's not. There are more things which are not identified, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm confused about.
The moratorium was put in place because there is a problem, and there is issues that have been raised. So you put a moratorium out there.
What are they?
And then so, right here, these are some topics that are right here on this sheet that are some problems that have been raised to my attention. So therefore, and I've looked at, so that's some of them. That's, that's why we put on it, because there was a problem. Last year, you know, I sent an email trying to get a group set together. One member stepped off the planning and zoning board, you know, and, and then we didn't have a city planner, still don't have a city planner, you know, for years. So there's been some issues. That's why we keep an extended. So that's a more of administration. I didn't see, when I sent it to administration, trust our work on it, nothing really took off the ground. So therefore, if it's not being taken off the ground from full-time salaries, jobs on there, well, then therefore, as policymakers, as city councilmen, I think there you got to take initiative and put it out there to get it going. So these are problems. They may see some other problems that they may want to recommend. But the reason why a moratorium is out there and was introduced was because there was a problem. There was concerns from the residents in the area that issues with large multifamily. That's not to say they didn't have issues with smaller ones, but this is a starting point, and it's being introduced. And they may have changes. They may have no changes. So yes, these are some of the problems, if you read, or some of the things that are concerns and should improve the situation.
Gotcha. I'm just trying to find out if there are more problems, because this is not the only, you've identified this is not the only thing that will stop the moratorium. What else is there that we're missing?
That's why you get public input.
Sam, what it is, it's just introduction.
Yeah.
It, that's all it is. And from what you said, Gonzalez, anytime somebody want to introduce something, you always for it. That's what you said. It's several things.
I'm for this. Let's introduce it.
But just hold up, hold up, hold up, hold up. What you said, when anytime something need to be introduced, let it be introduced. Several things come across this here board, and I didn't want to introduce. I wanted to kill it right then and there. Leave it alone. We ain't talk about it no more. And now here we going back and forth, and I don't know, the public not aware, we really have an issue. All five city councils, it's all about us, me, me, me. And so you can see now, anytime you go introduce something, and I don't have to bite my tongue for nobody, anytime you introduce something, we vote on it. It be introduced. And now, you going back and forth just to introduce. That's all he's saying. It got to start somewhere. What sense do it make for these people to be on the board? You don't pay the consultant. Ms. Lacy, how much that consultant was paid?
Somewhere between 82 and 85,000.
Yeah, we'd have paid $82,000. They told us what's wrong, what the problem we have in the city. And it's like $82,000 of the taxpayers' money go to waste. So now, here we arguing with one another, but when that woman stated every problem the city had, nobody from the city councilman said nothing. We have issues in Hammond. Just like the guy just said up here, we approved for the ambulance to continue servicing Hammond. What did they do? Tangipoh Parish did an upgrade. It haven't been an upgrade in 10 years. Hammond just did an upgrade. I didn't hear nobody say nothing, but it's good. It's an upgrade. And what we want to do, we want to do things the right way. We the overseers of the city money. That's our job to make sure that the money's not being wasted. If we have a problem, sit down and talk about it. And I said this is the first of the year, but I'm getting tired. So today I'm talking, I ain't going to keep going out of my mouth. I'm going to say what I want, and I'm going to do the way I want. I'm getting tired. That every time you look around, got to go back and forth, an introduction. Let it be introduced, then the people can talk about it. He said in his district. Why the hell I got to argue with him about the people in his district? If something going on in my district, you either come help me solve the problem in District Three, or stay the hell out my way. And I mean that because I'm tired. I'm not going to play these games this year with nobody. That's why I stay my ass at home, because when I come up here, I'm not going to sit here and act like you don't see me. Hell, we got a problem in District Three. I'm going to holler every time something wrong. If you do the job, just like I tell Chuck and his crew, do the job right, so the next thing you know, you don't have to come back, do the job, you should be dead. That's what I tell everybody. We're not going to keep half-assed doing these jobs, the taxpayers' money. And guess what? Now you got to come back in two, three years, three years, and fix the problem that you already started when you started on the problem. So we going to do these things the right way. We can't keep going back and forth over nothing. Let it be introduced, and we go from there. It starts somewhere. You put something on there, you heard everything the people said. These two ladies here, I see these two, they went to all the meetings. They know some of the issues City of Hammond have. Reach out to them. You ain't got to talk to Sam. You ain't got to talk to me. Reach out to them to the ones who been going to the meeting. That's the problem. The people that go to the meeting, we don't even reach out to them. You know, or you reach out to the ones you know. Reach out to all of them, and they can tell you what's going on.
Well, you're right, and I'm not going back and forth anymore. If you, if you don't support it, don't support it. Vote however you want to vote. Anybody in the public have anything to say about the introduction of UDC amendments that have been online? If you do, come up to the podium.
Real quick, I'm able to speak, and I'm going to say, I'm not saying I'm not introducing it. I have always said I will introduce things. I need to be aware of the purpose behind an ordinance. And I'm just trying to clarify that on the record, so I understand and other people understand. And then we're going to keep having lots of conversations, because although it may affect District Three or District Four, this affects everybody citywide. And so we all need to understand motives, how things are moving, why they are moving, and what the implications are going to be once they are passed.
So I introduce it and have a public hearings, and people discuss it.
And we're going to have lots more conversations like this.
That's good. Thank you.
Mandy Franks, I'm a real estate agent locally. I just have a question, Sam.
Yeah.
Have y'all, have y'all sat down and discussed with other developers and real estate agents what the findings were, so we can kind of all come together?
Well, this is two different things. The, the Housing Committee was set up, designed to, to look at some housing issues and a various variety of, of issues, and they came back with some, the consultant came back with some, probably 20, I think roughly, recommendations in that study there. Some of that information, you know, was some of the reason of the moratorium, I think, because we were just getting, we were just getting some more information gathered. Let's just take our time, get it done right. But that's, that's something different on, on that level. This is, has to do with just like apartments, the moratorium, large multifamily that was placed last year on, on some of the, the concerns that some of the residents were coming to, to me about, about, you know, all the big, large developments around their neighborhood with flooding, drainage, traffic, everything. And, and so that, that's that. Now later on, we have, we're trying to get the committee together, you know, later on in the topic, to get a smaller committee together to try to discuss and work towards the findings of the consultant, which that consultant report should have been attached, I think, to the website. Was it attached to the website, Lacy, or?
I don't know if the final one has been uploaded yet. I'll check.
So they, they should have that there. I mean, it's public knowledge or what, and not. And then since about 122 pages, and, but there's about 20 something recommendations.
That, that report, just to be clear, is, is very different. This, what we're talking about right now, and that's what Councilman Divatario is trying to explain, and, and I think the two have gotten muddled, because the issues have kind of come up at the same time, and it's gotten really confused. So the report and the consultant were hired really to look at blighted housing, to look at areas where we can improve housing development, whether that be single-family, whether that be small-scale development.
Right.
They were not looking at large multifamily development, and they were not hired to try to kind of work through the issues of the moratorium. They were hired to look at completely different issues. So that report is available. The draft was available as one of our past council meetings, and we'll get that, we'll double-check and make sure that's all on.
Yeah, send that to whoever you get it. I would like to see that, because we, we do a lot of rentals here and multifamily, and even single-home families that are rentals. And I will say, with the market that shifted, as you know, you have a lot of people who are buying these single-home families that are maybe not in the best conditions.
Yeah.
And some of those have been in your district, some have been in Kipps' district, and, and Devon's as well. And they're not putting it up to a standard where a family should be living into it.
Exactly.
Right. So I would love to know more about that. So you have any?
Yeah, absolutely. I'd love. Thank you.
I guess I'm the only one to say my name. I'm going to say it again. Sal Nicolosi, 3607 Highway 190 West, Hammond, Louisiana. I think the city council is here to represent the people of Hammond, Louisiana. Every time something comes up, it seems like we have a, a lot of, you know, diversion here. And I don't know what's the problem. Y'all represent the people of Hammond. The people of Hammond do not want all these multi-appartments. They don't want them. They want single-family housing. They want either townhouses, and to make Hammond look better over the years, 10 years from now, Steve, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, Kipps. You know, we, we, we are old-school people now. So these young people coming up is what's going to be dealing with all these 40 and 100 units, 600 units, or whatever.
a hundred units, six hundred units, or whatever. So, in my point of view, I've built duplexes for years. I've sold them, I've rented them, and each time, these were able to benefit people. And that's all we're looking here with this amendment to the city of Hammond, but I don't know what their amendment, what it really consists of, but I do know that y'all represent the people of Hammond. You think about it, the people of Hammond don't want the big units. They want nice areas, whether it's in yours, or whoever's area, it don't matter. So, is that, seems like, to me, that there's always friction, for what? It's just like Devon said, put it out there, let us get it done, and represent the people of Hammond, not your brains, not your power and your mind, okay? Because we the people is the one who paid the taxes here, we the ones who got to deal with it twenty years down the road, my grandkids, not me. So, I'm looking forward to having this amended, where these multi-units are just not, not coming back to Hammond. You know, y'all fought about the trailers, yeah, in, in St. Tammany Parish, they don't have any. What's wrong with Hammond? They've been fighting with that. Y'all been doing with this for like two years or better, and y'all ain't got nothing solved yet. That don't make sense. You know, why? If you representing my parish, or my, my district, I'm gonna call, whoever's in, I'm gonna call my man and say, hey, you know, this is my opinion. And I think all these people here, they, they invited to have an opinion. You know, we, we go through all these motions, emotional and all this stuff, for no reason. Do your job, do what you elected for, okay? Thank y'all.
And I mean no disrespect by this, we do have a big universe, we have a big university here, so we can't have a lot of these college students that can afford, right now, to go buy a home. So, the problem with not having some of these multifamily complexes is where we gonna house these students at? So, as a real estate standpoint, you have to have multifamily homes or apartment complexes to where these college students have a place to live. They can't afford a single-family home. So, I think what Sam has put into place, and what they're trying to discuss and make, is to make what we have now better, and more reliable, and helpful to the city, to where we don't have flooding issues, we don't have them looking like garbage, and that they're in a good place. But without having the multifamily housing, you have nowhere to put your college students, and the college does bring out a lot of money here to this, and to our city.
Welcome. Thank you for your information. I've been living in Hammond forty-eight years, living here. Now, that ain't when I was born, but I'm, you know, I'm not counting years I was born. And yes, I, I had apartments, and my students from Southeastern rented from me, but they rented in a duplex. They wasn't renting in those big forty, sixty, eighty, hundred units. Yes, Southeastern is a major factor, but the Southeastern students don't vote for the people here. They don't vote for, you know, for our council people. They nine and ten, they, they, they're not even in the district. They don't vote. So, who votes? Me, and all these people that are here tonight, that's who votes. So, yeah, I understand what she's saying, but I also understand there is affordable housing in Tansport Parish, right now. And I think, what I've seen, I think that it's, it's a shame that the, the council has to argue, and, and deal with stuff that is totally asinine, you know, in my book, because number one, it's the people who we represent. When I say we, I'm talking about the council. So, think about your people in your parish, and your city, and give it to them, okay?
All right, anyone else from the public? Because I do think, for the most part, everybody's up here has their heart in what they're doing, for the most part. I do think everybody's sitting up here is trying to do their best to represent their constituents, because those are the ones you take your phone calls from. So, I think this is a good idea, to get some of this stuff out here on the table, so we can get some of the ball rolling on some of these things, to handle some of the issues and things that we receive major phone calls on. So, at this time, I'm calling for a vote for introduction.
Now, Andrea, do I need to make the Planning and Zoning, make a motion to introduce, and then send it to Planning and Zoning, like having it passed, or?
Yeah, so, so let me just point out two things. One, Planning and Zoning's review is not limited to just, and you made that comment, it's not limited to just the suggested changes, they can make additional changes. So, it's, they're really gonna give to you what they think about the whole ordinance. Number two, it doesn't come back up to the council for final adoption until Planning and Zoning has made its recommendation. So, I would expect this would not come up at your next meeting. Planning and Zoning, I know is gonna give a thorough review to this, and I know they're gonna get public input before it comes back to you. This is just the start. So, yes, sir, on your motion, you would make a motion, i-if you wish, to introduce, and refer it to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review and recommendation?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to introduce, and to, uh, recommend to send it to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review and, uh, final recommendation.
Thank you.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divotario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number one?
A resolution authorizing the demolition of property located at five zero seven North Holly Street, ninety-four percent damaged, located in Council District One. The owner, Campbell, Campbell Funeral Services, Inc., P.O. Box six-five-one-six-nine, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, seven-zero-eight-nine-six, Bobby Mitchell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Campbell's Funeral Home Service, I've spoken with the owners, um, they actually initiated the concerns of trying to have it torn down themselves, after reaching out to several contractors for the cost of demolition. We decided to go through the process to submit to City Council for the bidding process to be done. We recommend demolition at a ninety-four percent damage, send District One.
So, let me ask you this question, uh, Bobby, on that, if we, if we tear this building down, we gonna assess the cost to them?
Absolutely, same process, um, we, once we do our recommendation demolition, at thirty days mandatory, um, grace period for option to appeal by state statute, and we will proceed with our bids as we do with others.
Okay, so the reason why I asked, you said that they were looking at doing it themselves, and I guess the cost was too, too expensive for them to do it?
Which is typically the case with all the ones we, um, submit, I was just making, uh, making it known that they have reached out to us, and that they are trying to be responsible as owners of the property.
They're not opposed to it?
Not opposed.
Anyone from the public have any questions or concerns on this item?
I have a, I'm sorry, I have a question. The only thing I wanted to note is that the attachment that's given to us, the things that are given to us, it says, "Attached are the following," and it's got a bunch of things that are not attached, so I don't know where that, where that.
What are, what are you seeing?
It says a Building Department's Recommendation, Building Department's Inspection Report, Order of Condemnation, Demolition, Removal of Building Structure, and, and Photographs of Location. And the only thing we get is this little one-page thing, with, with a picture of one property and a picture of another property. So, I don't, I don't know.
We, if, if possible, I mean, we, we have the documents in our office in the files.
But do you send them?
We can share those to, those are mailed to the property owners. They have those, those documents, which are mandatory by state statute to notify them with proper legal documents. But if you all are in, in favor of having that, we also have a, a calculation sheet, I think I may have shared it with you all last year, of the percentages of damages, of how we calculate the structural efficiencies of the buildings as well. But we can include that packet of all the documents.
I'm just saying that this says it's attached, it's not attached. I mean, more information is better. Of course, you're gonna get more questions from me, but, um, it's, it says it's attached, it's not, so if we could get more information, it's better.
Whatever's convenient for you, or we could actually, uh, include multiple photographs showing different, um, angles and sections of the structure that would verify the, the lack of integrity of the building as well.
I'm not questioning the building, it's pretty clear from your percentages and your pictures, I'm just making a note that not everything is submitted.
Anyone else? Pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divotario? Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number three?
A resolution.
I'm sorry, two.
A resolution authorizing a demolition of property located at two-eleven White Street, one-hundred percent damage, located in Council District Three. The owner is Chiquisha J. Hicks, twelve-twelve South Alameda Drive, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, seven-zero-eight-one-five, Bobby Mitchell.
Two-eleven White Street, District number three. The, um, percentage of damage is one-hundred percent. Recommend demolition.
Any contact with the owner?
Uh, yes, they have acquired a demolition permit. It limits them to thirty days to, uh, complete that process. Uh, it was acquired on last week, so it'll be prior to our thirty-day mandatory timeframe for state. So, technically, it should be torn down prior to the twenty-eighth of April.
Let me ask you this question, Bobby, because, uh, I think I passed by it the other day, and some, somebody was actually in the process of tearing this house down, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, so, if we approve it tonight, and I'm right about somebody's tearing it down, what is the process after that?
They, they have the right as an owner to demolish it prior to our legal response, which is thirty days from tonight, which is the twenty-eighth of April. So, they can actually acquire a demolition permit. What we have done in the past is not allow them to have time after that legal time limit, so that we're not offering them a, a stalling tactic. But if they tear it down prior to this, we'll just have documentation, and go out and take a photograph that it's been satisfied, and that'll, that'll end the process. At any time that we submit demolition, the owner has the right to tear those structures down.
I think my question was, if we approve this tonight, and they are in the process of tearing it down, what happens after that? Do it come back to us to withdraw the approval, or it just dies, that, like, that is just my question?
In the event that they satisfy the demolition prior to the deadline of the twenty-eighth of April, then they've satisfied the situation of the, of your condemnation. What we don't want to do is not condemn it, and they stop, and I have to come back to you and say they didn't complete it.
Yes, sir, so, Councilman, if they demolish the structure within the time limit of their permit, and before the Building Department takes action, it's moot, there's nothing to tear down.
It just dissolves, yeah.
Yes, sir, they'll just take a photograph and put that in.
You have to, correct.
All right, that answers my question.
So, will it be tore down, since it is in District Three? So, will it be tore down to where it'll be safe?
Absolutely. It'll have to be, it'll have to be satisfied demolition, can't be a portion of it torn down, and, and the flooring remaining, or blocks remaining, it'll need to be completely satisfied with the demolition process.
So, they have to go through the same specs as a contractor, right?
Correct.
And so, they have their sheet and everything?
They do, we would attach that to the demolition, uh, permit application that they acquire.
All right, and they got thirty days to do it?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Sal Nicolosi, thirty-six oh seven Highway one ninety west, Hammond, Louisiana. Uh, I'd like to know the procedure, Bobby, that you do. Uh, do you send them a certified letter, or do you, uh, you know, how, how are these people contacted? Because I noticed it seemed like everyone's from Baton Rouge has the, uh, has this property over here. So, I'd like to know what your job is, and, uh, you know, what your responsibility, whether you send a certified letter to them within thirty days, or whatever, and then, uh, they have the right to come and tear it down, or not, the city will take the responsibility and charge the people for the prop, the property that they're tearing down, is that correct?
Yes, the process is by, by, and I do quote, by state statute, is required to notify the property owner, or owners, that there is a, as an issue with your structure. We give them, uh, by law, we have to certify, notice, return mail to them, giving them the opportunity to append, to appear at this meeting, and it gives them the option to agree or disagree with my recommendation. And based on the recommendation, you know, once you condemn it, we have that thirty-day process to wait, with the option to appeal by the owner. If that's not done, we move forward with bids to, uh, to have a structure removed, after photo is taken and it's closed.
So, do they have any family members from District Three on this here project in here? Okay. Well, Bobby, look like you going in the right direction.
Right direction.
I must say.
In addition, I'd like to just report from, from last year, that we, uh, the, the previous ones that you all condemned, thank you for that, that we have, uh, five hundred East Robinson, five oh two East Robinson, five oh four East Robinson, and ten-twelve East Morris, were all demolished by the city through, uh, bids for licensed contractors, and those have been demolished and satisfied.
All right, well, anyone else on this item? Pleasure of the council. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divotario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
One second, real quick, Bobby, Bobby, can you cover a second, real quick, up to the podium, pass this down here, real quick. Uh, I just want to make sure I'm all for demolition and all, um, let me, uh, here, Bobby, I just want to, so we all have pictures. That right there, okay. So, that was on Anderson Street, now was we, you know, to get demoed, demolition, um, was supposed to go into effect in there, but the owner of the property demoed beforehand.
Correct.
Um, and so, he took care of it. So, do they have the same guidelines that they have to abide by, that when contractors tear it down, or do they can just tear it down however they want to tear it down?
Absolutely, they, they have to meet that requirement. What we've done, and I believe this address is twenty-seven oh seven Anderson?
Yeah, six-fourplex, and we, we're notifying them for trash and debris, because it's not properly done. Okay, because I know, because it's been like that for a while, it's probably been a couple of months they've had it like that, at least, or longer, November, November. So, that's where I'm getting sick and tired, really, of the same-o, same-o. I don't want to get calls from the residents, when we have a policy in place to tear down, and we've gone over this several times, when we do it, about cleaning out the slab, all this stuff, and we've gone over it, over and over, and then this guy goes ahead and tears it down on his own, and then he leaves it like that. Well, that should be introduced to us, and we should have went in there and cleaned it up for him, and charged him if he cannot abide by the rules that we have in place, and it shouldn't take this long to get it done. Not to mention, I know you said it didn't get that bad until recently, but looking at it, I mean, it was, I'm not gonna go back and forth though with it, but it was, Ms. Golden's here in, in the crowd right now, and she knows how bad that house was for many of years, and I know you said it didn't meet the percentages, but it didn't get that bad overnight, it's been like that. So, we just need to do a better job of cleaning that up, because there's no reason why anybody should have to call, come up to me, give me anything about a property like that there. Now, it's just, they should have cleaned it up, had it done just like the contractor's done, and that's it, and if not, somebody from the Building Department or Code For It should have passed by immediately, and said, not immediately, but a, a week or two, and said, hey, man, are you, you gonna clean it up? Obviously, he had some communication, because he got it cleaned up right before it was coming to demolition. So, I just, I just want a better Hammond, and I want this resolved, and I, this is just something that shouldn't even have it even been brought up, because it should already been taken care of.
Two things, Councilman.
Yeah.
Uh, they saved us ten thousand dollars, be, as citizens' money. They saved us ten thousand dollars, the citizens' money, by tearing it down themselves without even having a notice. They heard the presentation at a council meeting, and as a responsible owner, they moved forward, which saved us three months of timeframe to actually cite and initiate and present it. So of course, we complimented them for getting rid of the blight, loitering, didn't have to worry about drug users going in and out of property. The complainant was satisfied. And of course, we had a winter season where the tractors can't get in there because of rooting up, so that's the reason for the delay.
So how many, I'm going to ask you this, I don't, I don't live there, so I'm going to ask somebody, I don't think you live on the street either.
I do not.
Okay, somebody has somebody who lives on the street, how long has that house been like that, Ms. Golden? How long have you seen the house that has been deplorable with? Huh? Yeah.
I've been there for twenty four years, probably about maybe ten.
Okay, so, I'm not going to go back and forth, but I want to make sure, you make it seem, you make it seem like it's three months and four months, but it's been years that the house has been an eyesore and a disaster, so now.
Not structurally damaged enough to present it as a demolition.
That, that, you know, that's your opinion or whatnot, but, you know, like I said, you know, so, that's not going back and forth, so that's why since it's not, it's not being insensitive to the person or anything, but it's been, that it's been more than several months, it's been a, a lot, that a long time, and they could have cleaned it up when they demoed it out.
You're not understanding, councilman. If the structure doesn't qualify.
Well, no, I'm, I'm not going to go back and forth, arguing with that, Bobby, and whatnot, I'm just talking about now the debris issue right here.
Qualify, I can't present it to you.
Yeah, no, you're good, you're good, Ms. Golden.
Fifty percent of damage for the structure.
So it didn't have fifty percent of damage to that structure? It, it, it did that in the last few months?
No, the owner tore it down themselves, because they wanted it down.
Yeah, we're talking about the damage, two different things.
I didn't submit it.
But whenever they came in and got the permit to come and get that out, that structure out, they should have cleaned the ground the same, same timeframe and got it out. So there's no excuse, so I'm not going to go back and forth, arguing with it, but that's the thing that gets me irritated, because it's been like that, and you, and you pick and choose and everything else, or what, it needs to be like that across the board, that's why I have guidelines, and that's how it needs to be done, and we need to move on to other problems.
If I remember correctly, you and I spoke after that was torn down.
Yeah.
You, you gave us great praise for communicating with the owner and getting an expedited demolition that would have taken longer. Also, seven oh seven Barnes that was burned, that was on your list as well.
I was, I was happy to see it gone.
Exactly.
I was happy to see it gone, yeah, I was, but I want it going right, though, too, I mean, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I mean, it went on for years, like, before my time, before I was even on council, it, it went on for years before I was even on the council, so, she said ten plus years, so I'm glad to see it's gone in less than four years, you know, since I've been up there, but I want it going the right way and done and cleaned up, and, and that's, that's all I'm getting at, and just like Barnes burned down, I hadn't, nobody's told me anything about that yet, but has the structure been removed, or it's just sitting there burned to, with rubbings just laying around?
Constantly removing debris from it.
Okay. Do they have a timeframe on that, or, or is that just?
My guys, I would have to do a follow up, that's a, that's a trash and debris issue, and I don't handle that, my guys handle it.
Okay, and then, now, I know, I know the buggies here, I know we, we don't have anything as an ordinance with the buggies, what do we do with these buggies?
Not a code enforcement issue.
Okay, what, what issue do we need to, to address with that, Lacy?
We just pick them up and we throw them away.
Okay, because, go ahead, Ms. Golden?
We pick them up constantly.
Okay.
Constantly picking up.
Okay. Thank you, Bobby, I saw, I just wanted to make sure, why are you up here bringing these up, because I, you know, just want this issue resolved, thank you.
That was good, thank you.
Thank you.
Hold up, Bobby.
I'm just starting off with the issue about the property, I am glad.
Could you just, could you just give us your name?
Oh, Kyra Golden, do I need to give you my address, too?
Yes.
Twenty eight hundred Anderson Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one. I'm glad, Mr. Bobby, that you were able to save the taxpayers ten thousand, ten thousand dollars, and that the owners were able to clean off the property before the state, I'm sorry, the city had to do it, but the thing is, I'm the person that has to walk out of my house and look at it every day, and it's just really, it bothers.
Say it on the mic, because that's where they can hear you, thank you.
I'm the person that walks out of my house and looks at it every day, I just hope that, you know, maybe you could let them know again to come out and clear the property, because it, it looks really bad, like, there's been dogs that don't have owners that are in the property, it's just a hazard, and so I hope that that could be an issue that would be resolved soon. As far as the buggies and it being a constant thing, I think there should probably be a solution to it, I'm not sure what the solution would be, I'm not experienced in this type of thing, but I would love for someone to put something in place where we can stop the influx of, uh, buggies. It is something that's happening constantly.
We gotta, we gotta figure it out, it's not going to fix itself, I mean, believe me, I'm not, you know, I'm not crazy about it myself, having to deal with this issue, but it's an issue, and so therefore, we have to get together the city to figure out what can we do with the buggies, I don't know what, what it is, but we have to figure out something, because certain areas of town, it's, it's an abundance of it, and, and I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but I know it's not just look the other way and drive by and hope it picks itself up.
We don't look the other way, we pick up the buggies routinely and push them into the trash, we pay for their disposal.
I would have said, Lacy, you come me off, and I said that, but Ms. Golden, do they pass by regularly, uh, to pick up the buggies, or it's usually when you call, or I call, or somebody?
Usually whenever we call, with it being a routine, that's why I'm saying going forward, I hope there is something that the councilmen can do to put some type of. Something in place, as far as the residents bringing the buggies in, because let's, let's just go ahead and say it, it's mostly the residents that are bringing the buggies in, but who's holding them accountable for that? Because it's not every resident.
I don't know that there's necessarily a way to hold them accountable if you can't prove that they were the one who took it.
Okay.
So a lot of times, people take those buggies and they end up on somebody else's property, or they end up in the ditch, or they end up there by the railroad on Harden, I'm, this is, it's an ongoing challenge.
Maybe, maybe we just need to get a schedule, to make a pass by every, every couple of weeks, I don't know if we got to get an ordinance or whatnot, or set something in place, but put it in a duty of just routine in a certain hotspot areas. I, I, I don't think, you know, the residents, they should have to call in, you know, every time, and I know, I'm not going back and forth, arguing whether they do or don't, it's in the, it's in Lincoln Park area that I get a lot of calls from, and, and I know how long it's been, a lot of times I, I get responses from the administration saying, well, it's not, it's on private property, so it's not in a road, so going back and forth, at the end of the day, just clean it up, I mean.
Put them in the road.
Put them in the road.
Put them in the road.
Bring them back, bring them back to the, their taxpayer.
That's what I do.
Bring them back to the, bring them back to the.
Oh, no, I can't.
Well, that would maybe be why. I don't know what's.
Yeah, I put them in the road, and I know they're going to get picked up.
Just bring them back, call, let, let the city call the, the grocery store to tell them where their buggy is, and come pick it up.
They're, they're not going to send out people to come pick it up.
I mean, it's their buggy, I mean.
We will continue to dispose of them, we appreciate the calls, because it is, it takes all of us looking at all of the challenges within the city, and the reports are typically the fastest way to get something done. Um, we will be more proactive, I will ask that specific department who goes out and handles the trash collection throughout the town to, to do that more routinely, but I know that they do, do it a lot.
And I know that has to be frustrating for them to have to keep picking up the same thing, that's why I'm saying going forward, is it possible for us to come up with some type of solution for this?
We'll have to figure something out, uh, we gotta, we gotta look at that, maybe see what other cities are doing, or whatnot, or maybe get with the grocery store owners of some sort, and try to figure out some way to do, to figure out something, I don't know, but they, they gotta be.
They put sensors on the buggies, I mean, I know that's kind of drastic, and it might cost a bit of money, but is it possible for them to put sensors on the buggy, so that once it leaves out of the range of the grocery store, it'll alarm the person that has it? Not saying that the person that works at the grocery store has to run out and catch the buggy, but if you're, if you're wheeling a grocery basket and it goes off, I'm guessing you would probably leave it where it was.
No, then they'll get them, they'll end up getting a charge for stealing, so we can't do that, ma'am.
Okay, well, just an idea.
We're just going to have to work on your neighborhood, but, Bobby, one question for you, Bobby, you should, you could, you could answer it from back there. So look, uh, in Lincoln Park, what she's talking about, where these guys start tearing this here house down, they saved the city ten thousand dollars, which was good, but in the meantime, I'm looking at, it looked like a twenty thousand dollar mess, so what happened to the thirty days that we talked about?
The, the delay on this particular property, I spoke with the owner, gave him additional time to get, um, the trash and debris removed, winter set in, so the tractors are not able to get in, they're going to root and get trapped, so now we're in the process of trying to get it removed by citing them for trash and debris. The thirty day process had nothing to do with this, because I didn't bring it to you and submit it, we didn't condemn the house, the owner saw a presentation, and as a result of that address being called out, he was proactive and tore it down himself.
Okay, I'm going to ask this here, then. So the owner didn't come get a permit then, right?
He did.
He did, or he didn't?
He did, did, D I D.
Did, so he, and so the rules didn't apply to him, did they, the thirty days? I'm asking, because I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's what I was referring to.
Absolutely, what I'm saying is, because of the.
I know you're talking about the weather.
No, no, I'm talking about working with the customer that has saved the city ten thousand dollars, whereas if I had brought it to you all, it would have been an additional five months before we would got into the stage where he was, so we owed him some courtesy to try to get it removed after, after being proactive and getting it done.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Bobby, but I'm saying this young lady here, honestly, I wouldn't want to wake up and see this every day, so, yeah, we saved the city ten thousand dollars, but look what she had to deal with, that's all I'm saying, anytime, you know, whether it's in front of your house, in front of my house, I'm going to raise sand all day long, and I'm going to keep calling everybody, you know, but, what I'm saying is, as far as a citizen, and, and I'd have saw her up here before, and I didn't know why she was here, but here it is, as a courtesy, how many more days, how many more weeks, how many more months, I'm saying, she can't keep saying it, that's all I'm saying, so.
And, and we're, I'm happy that they saved the city ten thousand, that's not, that's not what we're discussing, discussing, this has been since November, and, and the weather with the tractor, some, some equipment got in there when they started taking down the house, so it was fine when they came in there with equipment then to take down the house, so they should have gotten it all done then.
You're right.
And what he's saying is thirty days, as in the thirty day ticker should have been then, and if they had trash left over there within the thirty days, then the city at that point would come in, remove that remainder, and bill them the thousand dollars or two thousand, it wouldn't have been ten, but I didn't want them to spend that, but I'm saying that's, he had thirty days, and he may would have cleaned it up if they would have said, you got thirty days to get all this stuff out, but if he's not told to, he's probably not going to do it, because it took him ten years to get to this point. So that's all I'm getting at, but yes, I am very happy to save the city ten thousand dollars.
I just don't like it when you all go back and talk about the number of years that something's been standing, when it's irrelevant to the situation where it's not damaged enough to condemn.
Well, that's.
So when you talk about ten years, that's irrelevant.
Yeah.
You could talk about six months, maybe, but not ten years.
And then it's been like that since November, so now we're going on about six months on it's looking like that as well, too, so we know that for a fact right now.
Right.
So we talk about the facts, because, you, you know, you may think that it was move-in ready two, three years ago, and you can just turn the lights on and walk on in.
Didn't say that.
But that's fine, that's your opinion, so appreciate it.
Bobby, you say don't go back ten years.
No, I didn't say that, I just don't like the, the long term.
No, just don't go back ten years.
Yeah, you, it's not true.
All right, won't go back ten years.
It's not true.
Yeah, okay.
Resolution number three.
A resolution, excuse me, accepting a nineteen thousand five hundred dollar grant from the Community Water Enrichment Fund to install automatic water monitoring treatment equipment at City Water Wells, and to authorize the mayor or his designate to complete and sign related documents, Charles Barsher.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is, uh, related to an application that we originally brought to this council well over a year ago, it's been a long time coming for the contract. We finally have it, we're asking for the council's authorization to go ahead and sign the contract, so we can start this work, it's to upgrade our water wells with automatic water monitoring and treatment equipment, so that we'll be able to, um, better observe what's going on with our water system, be more proactive in, in making sure that our residents have the best quality water that they can have to drink. There is no match requirement.
Where the wells are located, Charles?
There are five, um, well number one at four oh nine South Oak Street, well two at seven oh nine Pecan Street, well three is at twenty one oh one Rue Denise, well four is at two ten Tower Drive, and well seven is at three oh one and a half Weston Oaks Drive.
Now explain this automatic, uh, system to me, please.
My understanding is, it, it would allow, currently, if, if we need to go out, treat water, we have to do it manually at the well site. This equipment would both alert us to maybe the amount of chlorine isn't as high as it needs to be, and actually gives us the option of automatically infusing chlorine to treat the water at the site, so it can be monitored from an office, it doesn't have to be done, um, manually in the field.
So what if it gets stuck and put, put too much chlorine in there, then what?
There are alarm systems, is my understanding, that would prevent that from happening.
Have it ever had too much chlorine in the water?
I cannot answer that question, that's a question for our water and super superintendent.
Okay, see, when we do these here grants, and a lot of people might not be concerned, they need to have somebody from the department, I know they scared to come up here, but they don't have a charge, let them come up here and explain it, that's why I actually request, I knew you weren't going to be able to answer the question, you just do the grants, I knew that, so it wasn't no problem, but somebody, need departments, need to come up here and explain to the public once again, what we, what you apply for the grant for, and what exactly it going to do, and sometime a good demonstration would help out, that's where the public can kind of see what's going on with the city. Thank you, Charles, I'm not going to ask no more questions.
Okay, anyone else? Make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles. Resolution number four.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Vexus Fiber for the installation of internet services for security cameras in the amount of nine thousand dollars for Mooney Park, and fourteen thousand dollars for Jackson Park, Marcus McMillan.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Coming before you today to, uh, ask for permission to authorize the mayor to spend the funds of nine thousand dollars for Mooney Park, fourteen thousand dollars for Jackson Park, to authorize, uh, Vexus Fiber to run fiber connections, connections to these parks, to be able to have a connection, to be able to monitor those parks after hours, during daylight hours, whatever, just to make it convenient for the police department to be able to monitor any type of bad things that may happen there, or just a better and safer place for the kids and for the public.
Thank you, I'm, I'm glad to see this, uh, Marcus, uh, talked about it for a while now, and, uh, it's finally, we're like, it's coming to, coming to, uh, light, and, uh, I think it's going to be safe, the park, Jackson Park's got a lot of new improvements, and it's ducked off, so I want to make sure people feel safe in that, in that, uh, park, and to use, and, and try to keep out, you know, little, you know, miscellaneous little kids messing around, or just different, uh, other people out of the little area coming in there and damaging equipment or not, so, uh, I'm, I'm glad to see this, and I think it's going to help out, and, uh, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And all parks, too, I'm glad to see more than, not just Jackson, but.
All right, Marcus, I have a few questions, how you doing?
I'm good, sir, and yourself?
Good, good, so look, is there any way that we can get open Wi-Fi for the youth?
That would be something that we would have to investigate and, and monitor, reason being is because we have, we have security issues, we put that in place, we have to, like, currently, let's, let's back up and utilize the city, uh, with the city right now, we have firewalls in place that actually protect what can be searched on our network, what can be searched over the internet for things that we provide, so if we provide an internet to those parks, we want to make sure that we can protect that internet, which So if we provide an internet to those parks, we wanna make sure that we can protect that internet, which is gonna be cost effective, it's not gonna be cost effective as far as buying equipment and things like that, so it can get pretty costly. Um, when I say that, I am speaking on the terms of, we don't wanna allow kids to be able to have free wifi and do any type of searches. We don't want invite, um, any type of people to be able to prey on kids that may be using it for school purposes or good purposes, but it's open non-monitor internet connection, which we don't wanna provide as a city, cause that opens us up for some, some legal things we might not want.
Yeah, so, right now, with the cameras in the park right now, and the police have access to the cameras right now, so uh, do they? I, I'm asking a question right now.
For the parks that currently have internet, yes, they do, they have access to the cameras.
So what's the difference in us paying now, and they already getting it? The police already getting access to the cameras?
Currently, the way that the fiber ring is running in the city of Hammond, some areas of Hammond already have fiber that are in the area that are close to some parks, using Clark Park, um, for instance. There's a fiber connection that's close there, so it was easy to get the service there. For Mooney Park, there was no service provided in that area by Vexus, by Unity, or any of the providers that we currently use. So, with that being said, we have to, I think the closest one for Mooney Park is at one ninety. So they have to dredge from one ninety all the way back to Mooney Park to get that connection there. What's the, what's the benefit of that? The benefit is now you can tell your constituents that we have internet that's breaching this area, and now you have a better service that you could possibly tap into. Um, by also having this in place, the, uh, currently, just as a service for, from me to the city, to your district and other districts, the districts that have cameras that don't have internet, I get that call at night if there's an issue, and I get up and I go and pull the video. But, once we get this in place, that would allow the police department to monitor it.
But, when I say wifi, and I say for the youth, the kids need to be able, you know, you go to the library, you're able to get on wifi, open wifi, and we know they got open wifi in a lot of places.
That, that wifi is monitored, it's not just open. It is, it is monitored, it i- it does have restrictions. If you go to the library and type in drugs or guns or something along those lines, I guarantee you won't reach those.
Well, we can't put those restrictions on these here parks?
If that's cost that the city wants to face, we can look into it. Like I say, right now, to get internet to the parks just for the cameras, it'll be connected directly for those cameras. It won't be something that anybody can get on with any, any piece of equipment. If we put wifi there, that allows the general public to put any type of equipment on there, and that holds us liable, and when I say us, the city liable for things that may happen to equipment that connects to something that we provide, are those things that we wanna get into.
Yeah, well, main thing I'm concerned about is the youth, being able to go to the park where they can get wifi. That's my concern. And so, we're gonna have to figure out a way, cause I heard we just saved the city ten thousand dollars, and now we bout to spend more of the city money, so we saving in one department, but we spending in another department. And which is sound good whenever we say we saving the city money, but nobody said nothing, we just spent eighty two thousand dollars, and that was quiet. So those are the things that I look at, uh, I had three questions for you, that was one of my questions, uh. Now, they had a lot of wifi money out there for rural areas, and we've been hearing about, and a lot of places have been getting it, so is there any way that we get any of that money or what? Uh, that might be a question for Ms. Lacy, not for you.
I, I wouldn't be able to answer that for you.
I know, that's a question for Ms. Lacy.
Investigation for that.
Huh? Like, that's their question for you.
Okay, I didn't know if you wanted me to answer that.
No, no, you can answer.
I always like to check before I...
No, and I thank you, and I appreciate that.
Um, Charles is, may still be here. I know we looked at the internet grants.
Uh-huh.
Um, we all, we also looked at some of the other grants that were coming down. The provision of internet services is to provide in rural areas where there is not any internet provided right now. So, it's mostly like the northern part of the parish, and that's why you'll hear the parish is about to spend a tremendous amount of money on, on, uh, connecting fiber, like what Marcus is talking about. It's not for the services within like urban cores, which they would consider our city, where you can already get AT&T, or you can get it through Charter Spectrum, or you can get it through Unity or Vexus or some of these other places.
Isn't the broadband just so that people can pay and connect in? It's not that it's free.
Correct.
Right.
It's not free.
Bringing the utility to the people to then go pay for it.
That's my point, is that right now, they may have either no subscriber services at all, or they may have one that's very slow and takes, like, they can't download movies and watch them on their TV.
Okay, so another question is, uh, I see the monthly charge gonna be a hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety nine cent, and I see this gonna be for thirty six months for Mooney Park, Jackson Park, and Zemere Park.
No, sir, Zemere should've been taken out, and Zer- Zemere's already completed. The parks are gonna be, uh, Jackson Park, Mooney Park, and if we go through with those, the area that they're trans, that, that they're using to transfer this service, they're gonna include Martin Luther King Park, and Martin Luther King Park won't be overcharged because they're coming through that area to get to the other two places. Well, the other one place, which would be Mooney. So whatever they're doing to get to Mooney, they're going to add Martin Luther King Park to it for us.
And then that, that's not gonna cost any money.
No, sir.
So it's amazing though, and I have to say it, you know, that I'm gonna bite my tongue on this one, and it gonna hurt. It's, it's not for you, Marcus. And that's what the city, that's what the, that's what the people need to be aware of. See how these services not provided to the areas that you stay in? With all the other areas, they got these services, how your community is so far behind. And it starts with the city. It starts at the house first, but the city can help out. See, these are things I don't afford to say, and I afford to keep my mouth closed on, but I say, it hurts to bite my tongue, so I got to speak on it. Do all this here stuff for the police department, so when a four-wheeler hit Mooney Park, you don't have to get out your bed no more, so the police gonna see this four-wheeler in the park, right?
They, they had a video footage to be able to see it. We just installed ten, ten monitor screens in the, in dispatch itself. Um, one instance, we had, uh, one of our parks where a lady was arrested for vandalizing a bathroom, and the dispatcher saw it before anybody even called it. They were able to send somebody to, to tend to it.
What bathroom?
At, uh, Clark Park.
Okay, Clark, but you know, Clark Park will always be covered. Mooney Park, we got all this here stuff, you know, that's going on, graffiti and everything, but Mooney Park not covered. See, Clark Park, all them parks good, Kate Park good. You ain't got a camera in Kate Park, but guess what, the police gonna be there. And I'm saying, now you we looking at spending money, no? We looking at spending money for the police to have access to it. But yeah, we can't even get the police to come in the neighborhood. They don't have tracking device, so we don't know if they in the neighborhood, or at they house, or, or at Burger King, wherever, so this what I'm talking about. We can't get the police to ride through the neighborhood, then on the weekends, the four-wheelers and the dirt bikes, they just crank up. I know this don't have nothing to do with you, they just crank up. It don't make sense to call the police department, cause, oh, that's nothing. Then we call by gunshot, them fireworks. See, these are things that we go through. See, these the neighborhoods that I stay in, that we have problems every day, not one day, but every day. Then, I don't wanna crowd the community with speed bumps, but we have to do something. Hammond is not gonna get better. You know, Southeastern good, they covered. Police say he rode up there, he don't know why the hell he was riding up there, cause they don't have no problem. Devon, you the one got problems in your neighborhood, and we can't even come to your neighborhood. Don't I know? Somebody got shot in the neighborhood. The guy sat there and said they called the police three times about harassment. Then next thing you know, a shooting took place in the neighborhood. I know it don't have nothing to do with you, but see, the public not aware of the things that goes on in District Three. So, I think this job might be too big for the police department, cause it look like they can't do their job as it is right now, riding through the neighborhood where we can see them. Not arresting people, not writing tickets, but just ride through the neighborhood, showing that they concerned, the city of Hammond, hey, we like it, we gonna be friendly. I'm the only one got issues in District Three, but yet, all these districts though, yeah, with all these districts, we get a lot of grant money off the back of these poor districts, but yet, I don't see the improvement, and then when I ask for something, it's like, I'm asking for a rocket scientist to answer the question. We got to stop. It got to stop this year, this year. I'm not waiting to next year. It got to stop this year, or guess what? I'm gonna come to the council meeting and let it be known, the issues that we're having every day in the community. We want a better Hammond, with from housing to infrastructure, sewer. We got to get a better Hammond, and it have to start now. Y'all write notes down, y'all take notes, but yet, you do nothing about it. Young lady just talking about the trash in front of her house since November, but yet, nobody see nothing wrong with it. We got building inspectors. She shouldn't have to come up here and talk about this. We have to do better. I'm finished.
Can I get a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Stay.
Resolution number five.
Thank you, Marcus.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a software agreement with MyGovernmentOnline, MGO, for the Building Department and Code Enforcement, Marcus McMillan.
Counsel, I'd like to ask that you authorize the mayor to enter a software agreement with MyGovernmentOnline, software that's gonna help, um, with building permits, it's gonna bring everything online to where contractors will be able to order permits online, they'll be able to pay online, they'll be able to receive updates. Uh, it'll be able to give you guys something that you've been requesting to show that it didn't fall on dull ears or, or dead ears that we are listening, we are looking for the best things to put in place to make things better for the city of Hammond. Uh, with that being said, MGO will give us the opportunity to put things online for contracts, to be able to see things for, uh, any, any new projects, anything that requires a permit, all of those things. Also, to be able to give, uh, us the opportunity to do geo-fencing, to be able to produce reports that, uh, constantly asks for, for different districts, for different projects, things like that. Currently, we're using Intergov. Intergov is an application we, uh, started out, we came to you guys before to, uh, when we did the hardware upgrade after, uh, Ida, to prepare for the upgrade for Intergov, for Munis, and all of those things. We've been, we've been stuck with this, uh, upgrade process with Intergov, and it's holding us back. So, I brought this information to administration, and we did a demo with the Building Department, which I pretty much have everybody from the Building Department here with me tonight that sat in on the demo, got to see the, the project firsthand, see how the, how the software operates, and also talked with the company firsthand, and asked a bunch of questions from everybody within that department, how to make their job better. And we're coming to you tonight to ask that we enter in this agreement with this company, um. The company is based off of, uh, a monthly payment. The monthly payment will be eleven twenty-nine, eleven hundred twenty-nine dollars a month, and that will take care of permitting and licensing, planning and zoning, code enforcement, and also the GIS in- integration to be able to allow us to have GIS mapping incorporated.
Does it integrate with our current GIS, or it is its own GIS system?
It integrates with our current GIS application.
Did, did we, uh, did we bid this out at all? Like, was there any other companies, competitors that were, that offered the same software, or that just...
There, there are many companies out there that offer this type of software, but what this gives us is, uh, they have a cooperative endeavor agreement that, that comes with this application. If we, if we did go through with this, we, uh, we wouldn't have to go through all of the ropes and jump all of, jump all of the ropes that will come with finding other corporations that do it, or other places that do it. This software is based out of Homer, Louisiana. The city of Homer actually built the application for their community, for their city. They do exactly what we do. And when they built it out, they, they started asking other organizations, hey, you know, what, what do you look for? What are you looking for? And they turned it into a business. This business is solely based on what we do in our code enforcement office every day. Um, this, the parish uses it, we got several other parishes around the state that use it, we got several other states that use it.
Oh, so Tangbo Parish uses the same one right here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright. That's eleven hundred dollars a month, you said?
Eleven twenty-nine, one thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars, zero, zero cents.
So, Marcus, that's your question. So, uh, like what we just got to talking about in Lincoln Park, about the house, about them giving the, the permit and stuff, and, uh, how many days it took to do it? Or we can be able to go online and see this here?
With, with that instance that you just spoke about, about the house in Lincoln Park, what that's gonna help the Building Department to do is, right now, we all know that we have so much staffing in every department here in the city of Hammond. What that's gonna allow is that if somebody puts a, a request in for certain procedures, let's, let's, let's use building a house. Somebody says, okay, I wanna build a house, and the guy comes out to frame it up, but it hasn't been approved yet, but the man is lined up to do the cement, he can't do the cement, he won't be able to get that permit to do the cement because the other permit wasn't approved. But, what happens is that when they put that permit in, once it gets approved, it emails the person that's, that, that put in for the permit, it also lets the, the, the department know. So if, uh, one of the ladies up front takes that information, when she puts it in, it notifies whoever in that department by email saying, hey, you have this permit, this needs to be taken care of. Once that's taken care of, it will, it keeps, it keeps traction of your, your workload. So it notifies people as things change to keep the process going smoothly, so there's no drop ball and there's no miscommunication.
Okay, so get somebody from the Building Permit Office to come up here, and I wanna hear what they gonna have to say about it.
So, this, this has a feature that it, that it communicates with like the builder, like, I think St. Tammany may have something like that where...
St. Tammany has it, Jefferson has it, Tangbo has it.
And you have a builder's code, I think, too, to where they can communicate.
Right.
Uh, okay, go ahead.
Right, so...
One of the things that it also does is that, what, what I think you're, you're getting to is that if you come in as a contractor, you sign into the system, and you register and do what you have to do. The system is, it's, it's a cloud-based system, so it ties in, once you create that account, if you leave here and go somewhere else, to another address, or wherever, it's gonna keep the history. It's gonna have everything that you associated with, so if there are things that they have to look back at to research, or if you do research on a residence, on that residence is gonna show who the previous owner was, who, you know, just the history on that, things that we don't have. But we have them now, but there, it won't be as easy to retrieve. You have to go through this, this, and jump this step, and...
It's more organized, it's gonna be more organized, it's gonna be less, less human errors of just just natural, nothing person, nothing, just, it's more organized. There's a technology that's, that's actually keeping record of it um, in a file, commuter pile, instead of just being more paper. I guess, are they gonna be, uh, taking paper off?
More paper less.
Less paper, right?
Less paper.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
The, think of it this way, if you're a contractor and you're coming in, and you're building several homes, and you build homes here in Hammond, you build them in Tangbo Parish, you build them in St. Tammany, you have one account that you log into, you can see everything, and the, and what's going on in each place. So ours will just fit into that system. It will still be our own data that we own and we have, and it won't be public, um, to, so that may get more to what Councilman Wells was talking about. Could you log in and see what was going on? You could if you were in charge of the project, and it's yours, but you cannot if you're just a general public person.
Now...
It'll allow also the, one thing that Lacy left out was that the plans. We have an issue right now with a room full of plans, that people bring the paper plans, and you have all of this stuff stacked up. It's gonna allow us to put it where the plans can be reviewed digitally.
Yep.
Which speeds up the process.
Now what about fees and stuff? Are they gonna be able to, be able to, uh, pay their fee remotely, instead of having to come down from wherever, they can just put their little permit? That's great, yeah, that's another feature that's been a com- a complaint.
That will be huge.
So yes, they don't have to come in and write a check and all that, they can just put their payment online for whatever.
And it'll clear up a lot of errors, so if you think about it, when somebody comes in and gives you a permit, they've written down things on the permit. They, they potentially have made a mistake. They flipped two numbers or something like that. Then you take it as somebody else entering that information, and you're sitting here...
Yeah, just human nature, it's not purposely, it's just an error, yeah.
It'll all go in digitally and be one string.
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask again, cause somebody from the Building Permit Office, that's what I wanna see.
The whole, well, not the whole department, but why don't you all stand up, just so they know who all's here from the Building Permit Office?
Lacy, I just asked for one person to come up and explain to me using this system, how, how this system will make your job easier. That's all I ask, and I have to sit here and go through all this here.
Pete Lantina, I'm the deputy building official here with the city of Hammond. It's not about making our job easier, it's about help the public having, you know, an easier process than coming in, you know, when everybody's gotta work, and they can't take off work to come get a permit, they can do it all online. They can check the status if they're at work. Oh, this inspection was done. Oh, I'm sorry, is that, y'all can hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they, they can check it all online, and it's all integrated to a system where I go do an inspection, and it emails them, hey, your inspection's done, it's passed, or hey, your inspection failed, you need to fix this and this. And it's all, it, it's accessible to a point to where I'm not receiving a hundred thousand phone calls, like, hey, did you do this? Did it pass? Or hey, can you call me when you get done with this? Can you do this? I, it, it just makes it easier on everyone, not just makes our job easier, cause we still gonna be busy.
No, no, what I'm saying is, make your job easy, that, and I see what you just said, I don't have to call you. So you don't have to receive a phone call from me if I'm sitting here using this system. And, and you know what?
Right.
It is gonna make your job easy, so I mean, you still gonna get paid now, so...
To an extent.
Yeah, you gonna get paid, so they don't, the money ain't gonna be cut. I, I just wanted somebody, I just wanted somebody from the building, from the Building Permit Office, anybody, just come and explain the system, so we heard what you had to say. Marcus did his part, and, and by you being from the, uh, from the Building Permit Off, now you just explaining it, how it gonna benefit you, how it gonna benefit the constituents, that's all I want to hear. That's it. to hear, that's it.
Does this company have pretty good training, like, for y'all, are they gonna do, how's that training gonna work?
The way I understand it, they'll come to the site and they'll do onsite training to basically get everybody, you know, familiar with the process, and then they'll do, if you have problems, I say problems, if you have issues or questions, they can do Zoom meetings and stuff like that over the phone, which is really good because they are in Houma, Louisiana, which is a little drive for them to come, I mean, it, it's?
Customer support looked pretty good from?
From what I understand.
What you saw, yeah.
I mean, from talking to the guy during, during the demo, I mean, it makes it sound like it's, you know, pretty, pretty good system.
It should be a, a good accountability system as well.
I think so, absolutely.
I like, I like it, I like it.
I have a question about the code enforcement side of it, the permit side sounds great, code enforcement is there, there's, I see, maybe this is for Marcus, it says other modules, solutions in our code enforcement, where people can report, we can have follow-up, we can know records of what was done, if someone went out there, is that a module that's part of what we're getting here, and is that part of the plan? If not, can we add it?
That is part of the plan, and that is a module that we're going, we're going to get, that was the ninety-nine dollar a month module, and with code enforcement, it's going to, the whole application, all of the things that are listed, again, I'll list them again, permits and licensing, planning and zoning, code enforcement, and GIS integration, all of those modules are going to have interaction with the public. So, with that being said, currently, our guys take an iPad out, and they may go out and they're doing some, they're assigned work order that they have for that day. Now, it's going to help enhance that, if the guys go out and they notice something while they're out, and they're being proactive, they can initiate the ticket then, they can do the process then, it's already in the system, everything is pretty much done while they're out in the field. Also, when they put, when things come in, as they come in, it starts to build the workload for them, so they don't come in and sit down and say, hey, okay, let me figure out what I gotta do for today, the order's already started, they pick up their iPads and they go out and do what they need to do. Once that order's done, then that would help us be more proactive as a department, or as a building department, to be able to find things and, and be in the areas to take care of buggies, to do those type of things, to see those type of things, but currently, the way that the process goes with the software we have now, we can't do that.
Love it.
Right now, Ms. Bev in the back, kudos to Ms. Bev, has to hand key in every photo, every report, every, everything, whereas we have all these people who could maybe start their own stuff, but they just can't in the software that we have right now. The other thing, Marcus, do you want to mention the mobile app and how people can also use their phones to get to it, and they can, you can use those in the field?
Any, any, any device that connects to the internet, you can utilize it to put in a request, you can check requests, you can receive notifications through the request, all of that, you know, from requests or whatever, you can receive all of that through mobile devices, computer, email.
So, it's an app, it's an app that any resident can get to, on your phone, to go into, to?
Yes.
Put in your, submit your permits, fees, code enforcement stuff, whatever? Okay, that's good.
When y'all get this all up and running, I would really like to see some type of marketing to get it out to the people, so that they know that this is available to them, and that they, and that they can use it, because, you know, not everybody knows how to report a damaged house, or this, that, or the other, and not everybody knows what to do with building permits and so on down the line. And, and if that's, if that information can somehow get out there, whether it's through social media or mail or whatever, that people can have something that's very easy to follow and that they can do it themselves.
We're gonna, we're gonna also, speaking of that, we're gonna tie it into our city website also.
Yeah.
So, that way, it's easy to access, it's easy to find, and those are, that's places that we could actually control that doesn't cost the city any money, other than regular work responsibilities, and put it so that people can easily access it and promote it as many times as they want.
What about on the water bill, could we get it on the water bill?
Yes, I was gonna say, I was gonna say, Councilman Wells always likes the water bill. No, I think that's a great idea. We put the flyer in with the water bill, because that's one, one thing that goes to a whole lot of people.
Yeah, definitely need to spend a little bit of money, if it takes a little money, just to get everybody to know about it, so since we're spending so much on it, let's utilize it for everybody.
How long is it gonna take this to get up, Marcus? Well, once it is approved?
Once it's approved, the process, if it's approved tonight, I've scheduled for the kickoff to be April the fourth, we sit down and we have a kickoff meeting, everybody that's here supporting me now from the business department, I'm the business department, Building Department, they're gonna be there with me for that kickoff, everybody's gonna get certain responsibilities that they have to do, instead of my department taking it on and saying, hey, we're gonna get all of this information, it was a wise decision to bring everybody in and give everybody their own part to try to speed up this process, because the quicker we get this process done and get it out of the way, the quicker we can get our old solution out of the way and, and move on to something bigger and better, and give the public what they're demanding.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
I hope it does all the things y'all say it will do.
Pick that buggy up.
You haven't, you haven't let me down yet.
Pick that buggy up.
Alright, can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Thank you, Marcus. Resolution number six?
The resolution to authorize the mayor to enter, excuse me, enter into a memorandum of agreement between the Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office and the Hammond Police Department for the Gulf Coast High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Regional Task Force. Lacy Landry?
This is a contract that we enter into every two years, we work with the regional task force, this is all focused on drug interdiction activity. And the officers who work it only work this on their overtime hours, it's not part of their regular work, so they still do all their regular work, and then they are assigned to this task force, right now, we just have one officer assigned.
Is this, is this something we do every year, or is this something new? I thought I?
It's something we do every two years, we usually bring this to talk, they usually write it for, sometimes they'll do a one-year grant, sometimes they do a two-year grant, but we've been participating in this, and it's the Gulf Coast High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Regional Task Force. It's, it's basically drug interdiction work, it pays for the overtime for the officer, it pays for one vehicle, undercover vehicle, and it pays for one, sometimes for confidential informant funds.
Anyone else having?
I'm not gonna say my name again, because I'm sitting enough time. What I'd like to note, Lacy, is, is there, like, a grant or anything for this? I'm sorry? I, I didn't?
This, this is a grant, this is a grant that we're accepting.
And how much money is that grant?
Sixty-three thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars.
Per year?
This one right here that we're accepting is for sixty-three thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars.
And where does that money go to?
It goes to overtime work for drug, to intercept drugs.
So, is it going into Jefferson Parish, or is it going into Tangbow Parish?
No, sir, it's, they, they do activities here, yes. That's why, it's a regional task force, so they're, they're working in our region, because, again, how we've had the same conversation about drug dealers don't necessarily know where the city limits is, sometimes they're operating right here in the city limits, sometimes they're right outside the city limits, but it's a regional task force, and they work on taking out drugs.
Okay, so, what you're telling me is that, that sixty-three thousand dollars is gonna be spent to the City of Hammond Police Department?
Yes, sir.
And they going, what, what are they gonna do for that sixty-three thousand, what I'm trying to figure out?
They, they work on a regional task force to try to take out drugs in our community.
The regional?
Yes.
Now, regional is hot, how, how big is regional?
It's different offices from different departments, they all work together in the, in the region, it could be somebody from Tangbow Parish Sheriff Department, it could be somebody from, it initiates out of the Jefferson Parish, so it could be some officers from their department. Normally, what they do with it, is they bring different officers in who don't know, the people don't know these officers, so they might end up interacting with them, in other words.
Undercover, we, we talk about undercover policemen?
It could, pretty much, yes.
So, you're asking what the sixty-three dollar is actually gonna be spent on, like, labor, or, or what, is that what you're?
Yeah.
Or tools or something, or where they come up with the number sixty-three, I guess?
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, sixty-three thousand dollars, as long as it's being spent in the city of Hammond, but they gonna use the Jefferson Parish Police Department? Is that what they're doing?
It's a, it's a task, it's a task force that they put together.
They work throughout the region, to work on intercepting drugs, and getting them out of our community, getting them off the streets, we're trying to get drug dealers off the streets.
How long has this been going on?
See, if you get a law enforcement involved, we wouldn't have all this, that's why you need the people that, and the departments to explain this.
Good evening. So, this is, this money is paid by the federal government, it allows officers to work overtime hours on the task force that works throughout the region, and any monies and, that it's confiscated, confiscated, it, it's separated by the department, so there's a possibility you get some drug money in the department, in the parish, it's just, it's an agreement that allows us to work with Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office, other agencies work with them, federal agencies, local agencies, that's, that's what, and, and the money goes for overtime and equipment.
So, what they do with them drugs, when they catch, when they find them drugs, that's what I want to know.
We gotta seize them and then we destroy them, you know, we bring an incinerator, or something like that to destroy it, we don't bring them home.
Okay, no, because I hear somebody saying they put them back out on the streets, I didn't know.
We don't put them back on the street.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number seven?
A resolution to create a housing enhancement committee, Councilman Divatario?
This is, this is the one that has to do with the, the housing consultant report, we had, we could, we started a committee a while back, about a year or so ago, to look at housing throughout the city and code enforcement, all kind of different variants, issues, and the consultant came back with twenty-some recommendations, and this, this group here was, I was recommending to get put together after talking with some of the members of the, the group, they, they wanted to see, they wanted to see some, some initiative and some, bringing some of the recommendations forward and actually trying to look at and see which ones we may want to implement, ones we may not want to, some changes or whatnot, instead of getting the report and just, you know, tucking it away and moving on, so this is just really to try to get a group, a core group of people who have been involved with the committee, or may be interested in, in serving on this committee to review and, and try to work on the recommendations of getting to the, to the city council administration and whatnot, to see if, you know, we're, we're moving in the right direction with some of the, the recommendations.
Would this be typically the same group?
It could, I mean, each, I had it on there where each, I talked with Andre to try to get some structure on it, and we kind of discussed, we, we narrowed it down after talking with Ms. Karen, a little bit in the group, you know, she felt, like, she talked to some of the other members, she felt that, you know, a little core group would probably be?
Small.
Good, one per each council, district, and then to kind of discuss it and, and go from there and meet, you know, monthly, and go from there, and, and hopefully, get, get the report recommendations, you know, looked at and reviewed, and, and bring us some, some information, you know? Ms. Karen, you want to come up and come speak a little bit about it?
Ron Matthews is the one who actually highly recommended that we do this, not to get?
Ma'am, give us your name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She'll see you.
Karen Wallston, 404 South Cherry Street, Hammond, Louisiana. Ron, who was also on?
Yes.
First committee, was the one who, who really first came out and said, we, we can't let this report be shelved, because that's what happens to reports, I mean, we all know that. So, Ron and Steve, and, I mean, Sam and I and others sort of talked it over, and we thought, well, we need a core committee, a small group of folk, because the other committee was great for, for that purpose, but it ended up really those, and this always happens with committees, it ends up that there is a core group that is following through and, and continuing to work and interested, so we thought this time, get a group of interested folk, some of whom were on the other committee for sure, and I, I propose that we, we call it an action plan. I'm someone who, who is a proponent of that, rather than it being just another series of recommendations, it's gonna be, you know, what, where, how, and, and they sort of did that in, in the recommendations, but not to the level of detail that we need to get some of these things done and accomplished.
And originally, we, we started with a larger group, and, you know, and that was taken in consideration of that it might shrink, and then, over the time, you get some participation from some, and we kind of did that, it shrunk to where only so many were, were actually involved as much, and then now you have a core group that actually are very involved, and then it may be somebody else that, that is, like Ron Matthews, he was very big and supportive of this, which he actually wasn't on the committee, but he's on the planning and zoning, and he was, but he did show his, you know, volunteers' time to get involved and everything else, and, and, you know, wants to continue doing stuff.
Yeah, he wants to see things done.
Yeah, so, so, yeah.
So, on that core group that you're talking about, is it, is enough to actually handle what needs to be done? Or do we need to add more people to it?
I'm sorry, but what, what, what is the?
It was five, five members, yeah, five members.
Five members, okay, I, I mean, five, but I just don't think it should be more than eight?
Yeah.
You know, or nine, to really get things, to get things accomplished, you know, you don't?
And we wanted?
I was talking to the real estate woman who was here, and, and Sam and I talked about this too, that we do want to get developers and real estate people involved, because this is a private, the best way to get these things that they're recommending is obviously with the private sector, with the private public, you've all heard that, partnerships, but, because she's very interested, and I, and we talked about it, and we thought initially that we wouldn't have a real estate person on there, but then we would call them in?
Yes.
When we were at a certain, dealing with a certain issue, and get their input, so it's not just gonna be, and get in developers, and talk to them about their ideas of how they could make, enhance these areas and get the properties back into commerce again, the residential properties.
And planning is, Ron's gonna be involved in, in this, in this process as well?
Yeah, I mean, he, he's?
He showed interest in it, and he showed that he, you know, would, would like to, sir, as of conversations, you know, but, yes, yeah, he always has been, so I'm out.
What does it say that, that there is?
Five, five.
You propose, and how are they chosen, it was from the council?
The council, each district picks, you know, just kind of like we did before, except we didn't involve the state reps, senators, and, you know, everybody else.
And this time, it's, you'd say one, maybe appointee, rather than, now I know?
And to have an, you know, have an? Have an uneven number, you know, we, five, if you have voting purposes, you got two, three, as opposed to six, or eight, or nine, I would like to have an odd number, per se, and that's kind of how it worked out, so that's kind of what, where I was going with it, so, but, whatever.
Oh, no, the reason why, the reason why I was asking about the core group, this year, they had a group already, so it seemed like to me if they got that group together, it's already dedicated to it, yeah.
Well, there, there's a, there was a couple members that aren't interested, I'm thinking, continuing.
Yeah, and it doesn't have to be in a district, I mean, you just get, so, I mean, they may have a couple in one district that might, that might want to serve, and it, you know, it just gives a, a variety of pick, but?
We just really wanted to not, you know, do, the first time that was what we needed.
Yeah, how many of you?
Just starting.
You've probably talked to at least three or four, I guess, already, that showed interest, I mean, Ms. Ron, you?
Ms. Tony, would you be interested?
That's two, you know, three right there, so, one, two, three.
Karen, you're my appointee to the housing committee, so, if you want to do it, you're going to be my appointee to this?
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
My, my, my thought is, should the mayor not have an appointee, and then also for the committee, I think, looking through the recommendations in the plan, it does say, you know, continue the housing committee, which makes sense, and lowering the number makes way more sense, and, but there's a lot of very specific? Um, and, but there's a lot of very specific tasks which are not on a committee to come up with. It's, it's really the administration needs to, you know, hire a planner or, um, you know, we need to see. You know, our committee, a lot of the committee members are very skilled in this area. They have a lot of expertise, but you are laypeople, right? And so, we are not asking you guys to update the UDC. We, you know, that is something that I think this council needs to say, "All right, we need to update the UDC and hire a consultant for it." And I don't know if we even need a committee to tell us that, because this report just told us that. But maybe you're saying that you guys would triage the priorities here?
Well, you know, an action plan is a little bit more than a, you know, recommendations. It, it would actually state, you know, it would, it would specify, and this comes back to your first, um, when you were talking about the, uh, UDC, your introduction of that. That's why it's interrelated. It would actually specify, these are the areas that need to be up, updated, like in the, you, you know, the UDC. Because, well, Sam has, now he knows about it, I know about it. And taking those recommendations and actually saying, "This section, this section, this section," rather than an overall, you know, saying that these are the updates. And then, of course, that would have to be ordinances. Going to the building, um, I mean, to the, the municipal code and saying, "This has to be, let's say, for code enforcement. This is where this has to be, uh, improved or updated." Let's say concerning blighted properties or something like that. So, we would be recommending that those are the specific areas. You know, it's, um, it's, uh, you know, the city, you have limited resources, so we could help with that. But I think you say something in, in the, in the resolution about if we need to hire
Yes.
To do further investigation in an area that we don't know, um,
It's in there, yeah, I mean, y'all can recommend that. I mean, just like
Recommend it.
Just like the housing committee, you know, we hired a consultant. I mean, y'all didn't come up with a report.
Right, right.
I mean, y'all recommended it, and then here we are, so.
Exactly, so, it, it's really sort of helping the city, you know, really get more specific. You know, because it's, it's fine to say recommend, you know, changes to the UDC, but, you know, what, what changes? Or what to the, to the municipal code? So, um, I don't, any other questions?
I think all these things are really positive. And again, I think, you know, at the end of the day, city, city planning, planning and zoning certainly has to, you know, be engaged and buy into everything that we're doing. But, you know, the other thing that we've got to do, we've got to get a city planner. I mean, a city planner is the one who's going to, who's going to eventually drive this. And I think everybody agrees on that. And I don't know where we are in that, but, uh, you know, I can't, I can't encourage or engage the city enough. Hire a headhunter if we can't find somebody, and let's just make this thing happen. If you need extra help from the council
Or more money?
Everybody, or money, I think everybody here knows that, I mean, we've been talking about housing for a long time and, and come with the inventory, let this charge, it's time to get the charge going. And if we can't do it without the city planner, you know, what's the holdup? Let's get it going.
I echo that, and, and that's not a lot, that's a lot of the reason why delays and such. Whenever we had one temporarily, that was a conversation I started emailing last year with him temporarily, but he's not longer here. So, that was another delay with the moratorium. So, what I'm getting at is, even the report says to go find somebody with five years minimum experience. I'm not talking about hiring a secretary, train him, send him to a circuit, get a certification, and say, "Here you go." Plan the city that the largest city in Hammond, I mean, largest city in the parish, uh, it just go get some unexperienced. We need to go find somebody. And, uh, I don't want to hear about money or anything like that. I just want to see some applications. I want to see some good, skilled people apply. I want to get it out there. There's people out there, I know they are. Uh, we need to get a good, sharp city planner so where we can have these meetings with them. And, and it wouldn't be so much driven here. I agree with you hundred percent. I've been saying that for a year now, and it goes in one ear and out the other ear. And, and I'm glad you said it. I commend you for doing that and supporting on that, because that has been a topic, and it's been over a year now. And I'm not going to go back and forth, Lacy, we can't find money or whatever, but that is a priority. We have the largest city growing, and we need somebody with a sharp planning mind to come in here and look and review all this and be very involved. And we need some applications being submitted. We need to go advertising and get it. And, um, I a hundred percent agree. And we're going to continue to have problems, because we have to have a sharper leader in that department, that planning, because it's huge. You'll get that money back tenfold if you have a sharp planner in there, because they'll be bringing in a lot more revenue and everything else, because the city will be moving very, very, very good. And I'm not knocking the city right now, but we're, we're, we're selling ourselves short of what we, where we could be at.
They're going to move the hammer, so put that in there.
Yeah.
Yeah. It just don't make sense to get them, and they don't stand hammering, they know what's going on. So, they need to be a resident of hammer. You know, that's the rules.
That's actually not required for the city planner position.
Yeah, it's, it's the rules where it don't make sense to have nobody, and they ain't a part of us.
Yeah.
So, we have been advertising. Um, I think Councilman Leon has a great suggestion about the headhunter. That's literally the only thing we haven't done.
I agree a hundred percent.
We have advertised it, so it hasn't gone in one ear and out the other. And just to make sure you knew that, we, we have worked diligently on this. We have reached out to the planning schools and to the graduate programs that are throughout our state and in neighboring states. We have posted this many times. We have posted it on the American Planning Association website, which is where they all go and gather. We have posted it on the Louisiana American Planning Association, but we are more than happy. We will go hire a headhunter to find us a planner.
I agree one hundred percent.
I think you expand, I think you expand that, expand, let that a headhunter, expand that search to whatever we need.
Do, do we need to make an ordinance for that? Or what with the headhunter, Andre, where, about finding a city planner? Do we have to make an ordinance? How do we get that engaged?
Well, that's hiring personnel.
Yeah.
That's within the administration. You could pass a resolution requesting the administration to do that, or Lacy
We already have the funds, because we haven't been paying a planner. So, it's not about money, it's about trying to market the position. Planning in general has a huge deficit in a lot of places. If you go to the Louisiana APA website right now and look at all the positions that are open for planners, we need more people to graduate. If anybody is interested in this area, please graduate. Go dedicate yourself and graduate in this area, because it's a huge deficit throughout the state.
I can get you out somebody by the end of this week.
Mrs. Spill, how you doing?
Billy Milton, uh, 608 Susan Drive, Hammond. I just want to say that you got the momentum going. And the logic of the core group is to keep that momentum going until you get a planner in place and somebody whose specific job is this. But as long as it sits as, you know, "Well, we got to do it when we get somebody," it drags on like a lot of other things. So, the, the request for the core group is to have somebody who is accepted responsibility to see that the momentum keeps moving, that something keeps going, and that we get on down the road with it, rather than losing the momentum that we have now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for bringing that up, because, uh, Hammond is growing so fast, it's unbelievable. Uh, I live on Highway 190 West, and the traffic now is backing up from Crapazanas all the way to the, to the interstate. They got one, they got one red light between the interstate and Crapazanas. And now, every evening from four o'clock, it's backed up all the way to the interstate. And that's on the west side, which is not really being developed that strongly, you know? So, a, a, a city planner is definitely in, you know, the, the benefit would outweigh whatever it costs to get that person to come in that's educated in that and see a future for Hammond for twenty years down the road, you know? I mean, we, we all know that it's growing. We in, we in a, a middle of the interstates. You know, we got north, south, east and west. So, with a city planner, would probably just do, do everything that we really need for Hammond. And I thank y'all for bringing that up.
Thank you.
All right, can I get a motion? Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman David Tario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Reports, Mayor's office?
We have progressed, um, through the district cleanup city level. Uh, we are moving on to the state level. So, a big shout out to both our grounds department and our street department, to Beautiful and to others, um, the garden club ladies and everybody who was part of that effort. We are going to be judged for state level either the last week of April or the first week of May. And there are several cleanups scheduled coming forward, so we'll just make sure that y'all know about those and hope everybody can come out and help us pick up trash.
Thank you, Lacy. Excuse me, council reports?
I'll just report, there's the, the Hammond Rec is, is putting on the Easter egg hunt, um, this Saturday. It's at Murray Park from twelve to three. And then, um, also, on Friday, they have picnic in the park at Kate Square Park. And that's from five thirty to seven thirty. So, good weekend activities.
Yeah, I'll just, I'm going to bring up, um, street, the street lights again. So, uh, can I get an update tomorrow, Lacy, on 2101 West Dale Court Corner Belfast? Uh, that one's been out for several months. Um, also, um, there's a light on Susan Drive. Um, it was supposed to be added, saw the ticket a while back with LED light on, on, right in the little recreational area of that neighborhood. Um, that was before the storm, it was approved and left it alone. The pole and light's still not up over there with energy. Wanted to check to see if you can get an update on when they're going to install that. Also, that I think, uh, the city may have, uh, damaged a culvert, uh, when they were changing or fixing a water leak over there on that Susan Drive area, and they were supposed to come back to re, you know, replace it, the culvert, and put it back in and correct it right, and they haven't been back, so they're asking me about it. So, I want to get an update on that as well, too, when they plan on scheduling that, that, um, culvert replacement and repair on that, that area. Um, so those are that, let's see, uh, yeah, just double check on Horton Drive and West Church area. That west side, there's a few lights out over there, uh, that are real dark. And, um, that, that's, that's all I have right, uh, right now. Thank you.
Okay, Lacy, I need, uh, a follow-up. Uh, I reached out today, didn't get an answer. Um, they doing some, I don't know if it's sewer work or whatever, Martin Luther King, right in front of the church? They done dug out some areas. I don't know when they plan on coming back to pavement, but they need to put some more rocks down. Yeah, they need I did it, they go, they go, I'm asking them, I know they got a, they got a pavement, but I'm trying to get them to get their part there done until they can get to the pavement. Where, when, tab, nobody's car worsening already did. Oh, okay, uh, I appreciate the dialogue back and forth today we had in, in reference to the food truck, uh, questions. I did receive the information that Andre sent. I'm in the process of looking at this information, looking at some other areas on the same sides of our city to see what conducive to us to put this, um, ordinance together. I've talked with Andre, hopefully by the next day or so, I can have all this stuff together. We can sit down and we can put this together, so we can put this, put everything to rest with all of it.
I'm glad you brought that up. I want to add another thing. When you, when you sent, that email went back and forth, you sent an email with a picture of that metal building over there, uh, on Corbin District. They have, they have, yeah, okay, well, they have a couple, I saw that, they have a couple of people asking about just putting metal buildings up in the district now. So, my understanding was it needed to be a brick facade or some kind of decorative facade of it, not just tin up there. Yes, I saw, and I saw the picture, I think, so I just want to clear, I think you said something about maybe Robert Morgan or something back in the day. But I want to see, because it clearly says on those pictures that it's, okay, all right.
We're happy to talk to people who have ideas about what they want to build, and we can do all the calculations then, but I think
I just want to follow the rules on there, so, and if it needs to be a brick facade, it needs to be a brick facade on the front, or whatever.
Doesn't specify that, there's, there's lots of options. So, go back and
Okay, I look at
We'll be happy to
We'll put, we'll blow it up on, uh, projector next meeting, and we'll put it up there, and we'll look at all of them if, if you want. So, where everybody here can see the difference between what's acceptable and not acceptable, but that's fine.
I, I was just suggesting that if people have specific projects, this is what we do with every project. They come in and we work through the questions that they have. There's lots of things to look at. There's lots of percentages that get calculated in transparency and in non-metal and lots of other things along with that. So, we're happy to sit, we do that every day, sit down with folks about their projects.
I'm sorry, I'm good, yeah, I'm good, yeah.
One more question, too, Lacy. On Mitchell and Pine, uh, the right-of-way. I think we were waiting to find out about that, so they could start the drainage project there.
Right.
Have they got, have they made any contact with whoever that land owner is?
Haven't talked to any of those folks lately, but that's on my list of to-do, so we will get that. I know that that contract is set to sunset, I think, in April, so we're trying to get that knocked out and finished.
Uh, they got these people in here. Y'all have anything y'all want to say, man? Because they just sit here for the whole council meeting, and I'm quite sure they have something to say.
Good evening, how y'all doing? My name is Kelly West, 116 Elm Drive, Hammond, Louisiana, 70401. So, I'm not bits and pieces, because I do a day job and I run a food truck at the same time. So, I'm not sure what conversations have been going back and forth. I know we got a gentleman back here, um, that's, truck's been closed down. I don't think it's fair, I don't agree with it, because ordinance-wise, if it was clear, we would follow those rules. When we set up for state licensing, you pay your state fees, I pay parish fees. We get hit by every city in the parish, $200 a pop. So, if we're going to pay the fee, give us somewhere to park. If it's going to be, you back us off a hundred feet or however many feet from a restaurant, give us that right. But don't say that the truck can exist inside the city limits. Food truck in no way can sabotage a restaurant. I'm just going to go on the record and tell y'all that. There's no way possible, we can't tote that much food. Other thing about that is, nobody should be afraid to start a business in our parish. We live here, we pay taxes here.
Say it on the mic, because I don't think they heard you.
We live here, we pay taxes here. Own property here, I work here, I work multiple jobs here. So, I feel like, and I'm trying to give my kids a legacy at the same, at that same turn. I don't want my kids to have to go out and beg somebody for a job when I can teach you a trade that's not just you standing on a corner, throwing a basketball, learning how to do football. Smoking meat is an art form. It's not something that's taught, especially to people of my color. And I know color shouldn't have anything to do with this, but anybody can barbecue. You can go out and light a flame and burn a piece of chicken all day long. But smoking, you got to learn temp, you got to learn textures. You got to learn a whole lot of stuff that we could teach these kids. But I can't bring a community of kids in, because I can't exist where I want to pull up at. I can't go to your area, because I got to worry about somebody pulling me over and saying I can't be there.
Oh, you can come to my area.
But, yeah, I can come
Yeah, you can come to my area.
I come to you.
Yeah.
But I can't be by Winn-Dixie or otherwise. I can't come downtown, which, what you guys are doing is shutting out things that these people can do. They're not harming anything. A lot of them have agreements with other property owners, and then, some kind of way, we get ran out. It's not fair. We pay insurance. If it's about showing paperwork, whatever the case may be, we can't get state license without having paperwork in place. We follow the same rules that all of the restaurants have. You got to have serve safe. All of the rest of that stuff has got to be displayed. You got to be clean. I got a health inspection scheduled on April fourth at ten o'clock. My trailer has to go be inspected. So, it's not about any of that. We just got to get down to where they're going to be allowed to go, times they're going to be allowed to be there. If we commit, y'all create committees and look group like we just talked about, put us on a committee. Bring us in the room for the conversation. We can tell you better than anybody else what we need. We don't ask for water, we total our own water tanks, we don't ask for power, we got that covered, too. All we're trying to do is survive. Everything costs money. We're spending Everything costs money. We're spending the money. I don't know what you got tied up in your food truck, but I'm about $43,000. And it's sitting in my driveway making nothing because we got to worry about too many things, too many variables on what we can do or can't do. But then when we go outside of our state, outside of our parish, we can do what we want. I can go to Mississippi and run one day in Mississippi for six hours and I'm a grand over. Why would I go pay taxes to a state that I don't live in, a community that I don't live in, when I can do that same thing here at home? Just make it fair. That's all I'm asking. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. And I agree with you 100% on what you just stated. Hopefully by Friday, I could have this stuff with Andre, where we can look at this and iron this stuff out so we can get this in place for you guys to be able to operate here and do what you need to do right here. I, I, I agree with that a whole 100%. You know, I'm all for people having their own business. I think that's, that's, that's a good thing. I just want to make sure we got everything clear and put together. Some of the information that was sent in the email didn't look like to me that it would fit for Hammond. So I was trying to find some other cities that do it that fit our mold where we could put that information in there. And this information will come before you guys, before it's even voted on us, because we're going to have to have a public hearing on it anyway.
That was going to be my next.
Right. We have to have a public hearing on it.
As far as the, the information, as far as requirements, the other thing that I forgot to mention is when we're doing this licensing, a part of the problem that we have when we do the licensing, I'm speaking for myself. I ain't going to speak for the group. Even though I know 90% of the people that are running trucks right now. If the state says that we're supposed to come to the city of Hammond for permits, that's what we need to be doing. We don't need to get shown and say, okay, well now you got to go to the parish. Because the parish doesn't handle that. They handle a certain portion of it. But when we call for the city to get the proper documentation, then you got all of this, well, we don't do this and we, we don't do that. Okay, so then you create a sticky situation because now you put people in a predicament to where they have to do stuff under the table. When we try to do it the right way, let it be done the right way. It's not about cost. If it's about a permit that we got to have, especially for me, on the record, I own Fire King. It's a barbecue trailer. If it's about cost of a permit, give me the cost of the permit. Let me put myself out of business. Don't allow somebody else to stop me from doing what I need to do to support my family. I got four kids, 41, and I just had a newborn a month ago. So let me go to work.
So you need to work.
Yes.
Ah, Lee. Yeah. Jesse, you good right now, Jess? I'm going to say this here. I want to thank y'all for coming out because what we going through, we hear this all the time. And I know my man ain't want to say nothing on the record, but Dave Lambert had a food truck downtown Hammond. Nobody said nothing. We know we got food trucks in my area that get these special permits. Nobody said nothing. Not one time. And I was just waiting for somebody to say, we're going to give you a special permit. See, that's what's not being said that, that's going on in Hammond. So now we're trying to come up with something and it shouldn't even get, it shouldn't, it shouldn't have never got there. They go to Club Deluxe Road, get an inspection, take the food service course. They doing everything the restaurants are doing. Chris tried to do a barbecue place, voted down by one. But yet, we can't keep having people trying to start a business and we tell them no. But if it was downtown, every city councilman will be jumping up saying, when you going to open? When your grand open? Every city councilman up here, that's what we say. But you all have a problem and this is what I'm looking at. Y'all had to stay for the entire council meeting. Y'all noticed this room was packed. Nobody know y'all problem but y'all. And I want to thank y'all for coming up here, telling us y'all problem. I know your problem. What do I tell y'all all the time? It's not going to get solved until you come to the council meeting. So now everybody get a chance to hear what's going on. We can't keep pushing it off. Andre, you and Kipton talk. It's time to put something into action. Can't wait till next month, next year. This man got an, now, he not asking for welfare. He asking for an opportunity that you done gave everybody else, a food truck permit, a special permit. Give it to them. You ain't got, what did you tell them the rules? They can't do this thing? You gave them one. Give it to them. And they ain't never came to a council meeting. These people here.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah, say whatever you want, man.
First of all, my name is Jessica Quillen. I live at 40504 Mastodonie Road, Hammond, Louisiana. And I came to the office over here to get a permit. I asked her, what do I need to get a permit? She said, I can't give you one. I'm like, ain't this the place to get occupation permit? She said, yeah, but I done been sitting out three times. One time she came out there, the last time she came out herself at the office. And she told me I couldn't be there. So I'm, I'm like, why? She said they don't allow food trucks in Hammond, period. That's what she told me. So I done been sitting out three times. And then I'm on private property. I'm, I'm way out the way. I'm up here on $1,500.
Don't tell them, they going to come get you. Don't tell them.
Way up there. And I'm not around the restaurant. I'm not around nobody. But people called in, I guess. I don't know. But like you said, I'm, I'm trying to make a living because I'm, I was working in the plant for 30 years, 30, 40 years. And I got something, and like you said, my food trailer cost over $40,000. I got everything, a restaurant, I got in my food trailer, everything. From the hood system, stove, icebox, freezer, everything. I got deep fried, everything, state of the art. I, I don't have nothing just been, you know.
Pulled out the woods.
Pulled out the wood and just put together. I paid money for that thing. And I got every license. I got every permit. I got everything that I need. Everything. Mine was up and running, but now they don't shut me down.
So did they tell you where to get the special permit from? Did they tell you that?
She told me I couldn't get one.
Huh? Who said, who, that what she said?
Uh, did, uh, Linda, Lys, Linda, whenever her name over here that, that do the permits?
It's a single day special event permit. And it's for, typically it's for like big gatherings, like hot August night, like a baseball tournament, those kinds of things. It's not just to sell to the public, but. That's what we, right. And that's what we've emphasized is, I think the way forward, what Councilman Andrews is saying, the way forward is to look at that ordinance that, that Andre had proposed, make suggestions, create an ordinance, let's get it rolling. We've talked about this for a long time.
I just want to cover one other thing. Mr. Wells, you probably better than most. The, the special permit thing, I've worked under the special permit, not been given one, but worked under one. It cannot be something that you guys are only given one day. Because it has existed until said company has decided to go up with a structure. We cannot do the same thing. There's never going to be a time when the parish or the state won't inspect us and we can be hooked up to a water supply permanently. We cannot be hooked up to electricity permanently. It changes the whole game for us. All we're asking is that everything be fair. Don't have it to where one day we come in to get a permit and we're told we can't do it inside the city limits. You got to go outside the city limits. Then when we get outside the city limits, we get in trouble for that too. It cannot be a double no. There has got to be some kind of compromise. Bring us to the table. All of us are going to be fair, but we got money tied up into these trailers. That, when you go to a meet, they're not just handing out a free inspection saying, okay, Kelly, you got this $2,000 trailer that you got 10 roofs on and two made pop tires. $43,000 worth of trailer, $20,000 worth of truck to pull it, we got to do something. We got to do something. I shouldn't have to work three jobs. But I do because my trailer's dead right now. Give me back the resources. Give everybody back the resources. If you guys find health, health violations after you put something in place, shut them down on principles. If they don't do it right, get rid of them. If you need somebody to enforce the code, give it to me. I'll do it. Because everything needs to be done above board, but by the same token, give people the chance to make some money. It shouldn't be just if you got a restaurant, we're going to let you in. That's not, that's not something we're trying to do. I went home right now and said that I wanted to open a restaurant. I'd be homeless tomorrow. I'm not trying to feed that many people. I'm not trying to have that kind of overhead. Four kids, a house, three cars. I got a daughter finna go to college. I can't afford to open a restaurant right now. Regardless of how good I think my food is. The advantages that we have is we can give you something to eat and you can judge what I can do by me feeding you. It's an industry that, that's really the only place you can get that. A plumber can't put nothing in your mouth and say, oh, you going to do a good job plumbing the house, but we can't. Give us the opportunity to exist. Make it fair. We'll play ball.
Thank you, sir. It's easy fix. Look and see what New Orleans doing. Look and see what Baton Rouge doing. It don't take 10 months to fix this, if you want it fixed. So it don't take long. Now, my council report is, we talked about these abandoned cars. We talked about these mobile homes. Did we ever come up with a date that we can meet on? I'm saying, we can't keep talking about things and not getting things done.
The cars is on, is on my, what I was asked to do and I'm doing it, is give you a summary. So make it easy. And I really whittled it down and make it simpler and easier. So yeah, that's the abandoned junk cars. That's on my plate. That hopefully will be very soon to you.
Yeah, and I, I talked to Andre about that and I know he was close to getting finished. I just said, well, just don't take your time, but don't rush it to where, you know, we're that close to getting it cleaned up. So I'm very happy to see that the, the end is near and that, that'll be hopefully to us soon. And, and yeah, so that, as far as the trailers go, I mean, I, I, you know, meeting wise, I mean, it, it, I've said some of my days, y'all said some of y'all's days, I'd, I'd, you know, rather get it done on a city council meeting day beforehand. And I mean, Steve, you said you have no trailers in your area. So our, Carla really don't have any. Really, I think three of us are main ones that are going to be, you know, have some issues. So I mean, you know, I don't, I don't know if y'all good for a city council right before the city council meeting. I mean, one of these days, a little earlier to come in and discuss whatever. I mean, I'm, I'm open.
We set the meeting based off of the commissioners as well. It wasn't just us. So the, I had to go off of the consensus of when everybody says they were able to meet.
When, when are, when are they meeting? When are y'all meeting?
We set it for Monday.
Okay, okay.
April, is it?
Yeah, it's Monday.
Okay.
Monday, April 3rd, yeah.
I don't think I'm going to be able to make it, so.
I get a motion to adjourn if there's nothing else.
Second.
Being adjourned.
Thank you.